Everything got real quiet.
That's good.
We'll call the meeting North of Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2024-08 for April 16, 2024. Those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and please have listened, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Our kingdom is in heaven, and power and glory forever. Amen.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I entertain a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussions or corrections? Seeing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Consent agenda passes. Now, we have a whole bunch of proclamations this morning, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
The first proclamation we have is to recognize the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we have Ms. Jerona Smith, Director of Lower Shore CASA, and Ms. Jen Dale, the Clinical Director, and Christina Fien, Director of Legal Services. Councilman James Nguyen is reading the proclamation. Let me know if I pronounce your name wrong, please.
Ms. Jerona.
Jerona. Thank you. Thanks.
All right. So this is a proclamation for National Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas it is established nationally that more than 1,540 children die each year from child abuse and neglect. And whereas child abuse is a serious, a serious public health problem with studies documenting the link between abuse and wide range of medical, emotional, and physiological behavioral disorders, and whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility that requires partnership among various agencies that work with children. Now therefore, be resolved that the Wycomico County Council proclaims April 2024 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month.
On behalf of the Life Crisis Center and Lower Shore CASA, we thank you so much for the recommend, for the recognition today, and we are very adamant about advocating and serving the children in our community. Thank you so much.
You.
Can we get the whole team up here? Yes, want to stand right in front, right here, so we can get.
Now, is everyone going to stay up here for the next, for the next proclamation?
The next proclamation is to recognize the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Yep, everybody just stay right there, and that's good. Josh, Councilman Hastings is going to read this proclamation. You guys can line up on both sides of the podium, spread it out a little bit.
Thank you all for being here.
If anybody wants to take a picture, they can go all the way up to the podium if they want to. Feel free.
All right, this is a proclamation of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is time to draw attention to the prevalence of sexual assault and educate individuals and communities about how to prevent it. And whereas sexual harassment, abuse, and assault are widespread problems in the United States, nearly one in five women and one in sixty, sixty-seven men will have been raped by the time, by the, at the same time in their lives, and about one in four girls and one in twenty boys have been sexually abused by the age of seventeen. Whereas sexual harassment, assault, and abuse can happen anywhere, including online. Cyberbullying and sexual harassment have come to be expected as typical online behavior. And whereas we can make a difference by building safe online spaces that are free from sexual harassment, abuse, and assault by promoting online communities that value safety and respect. Now therefore, Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims the month of April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Wycomico County, done the sixteenth day of April, signed by the entire council. Would anyone like to say a few words?
Thank you for taking the time to recognize both of these important causes that we face daily. This is just a small portion of our team from Life Crisis. This is part of our clinical team and part of our CASA team, and we just appreciate all of the support from the community. Thank you.
We have one more, don't we? Right? National Volunteer Appreciation Awareness, Appreciation Month. Mm-hmm. That's Shani. I'm going to skip down and go to the proclamation to recognize the month of April as National Volunteer Appreciation Month. Councilwoman Shields is going to read it, so if you could transition over there behind her, if you don't mind, right behind Councilwoman Shields.
I have to apologize.
Come on over, guys. Yeah.
I just wanted to say before I read this, that I believe being a volunteer is very important to our community. It's considered unpaid work, and I found out many years ago when I moved back home, that's what I was doing, volunteering before I got a good paid job. And you can use that on your resume, and that's what it public to know. It's considered unpaid work. I should read this proclamation, Volunteer Appreciation Month, whereas April has been designated nationally as Volunteer Appreciation Month, to recognize the hard work, dedication, and passion of volunteers, and where as Volunteer Appreciation Month celebrates the impact volunteers have on our lives and encourage active volunteerism in generations to come. Whereas often unpaid, volunteers generously donate a part of their lives to connect with community members through local services organizations, and whereas Life Crisis Center Incorporated has volunteers who serve by donating their time for the CASA program and its domestic violence legal advocates. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council recognizes the month of April as Volunteer Appreciation Month in Wycomico County, and urge all citizens to volunteer in the community, done this sixteenth day of April 2024, and signed by all of us on the county council.
Thank you so much, and if I could piggyback off of what you said about volunteerism, none of our programs would be where they are today, and we wouldn't be able to provide the services that we do in our community if it were not for volunteers. Even though volunteers don't get paid, they have the heart to serve these children, to go to the hospitals, to sit with the domestic violence victim, they have the heart to do those things, and without the support of the community, our programs would fail to flourish. So I thank you so much for all of the support that we receive from individuals in the community, and if you are happy to be looking for opportunities to volunteer or to help your community, we have tons of them. So either before I leave, you can speak with me, or you can speak with Jen, we will be glad to provide you with more information.
For the public to know, can you say what CASA stands for?
CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates, and that's exactly what it is. We, we are volunteers from within the community. You don't have to have a special role, title, education, anything like that. We are, they're everyday people from within the community who advocate in the courts on behalf of abused and neglected children.
to recognize Arbor Day in Wycomico County. It might surprise you, but Councilman Hastings is going to read this one.
Okay, our next proclamation is Arbor Day, whereas in 1872 is proposed that the Nebraska Board of Agriculture, to the Board of Agriculture, that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, so that a holiday called Arbor Day was first observed in planting of over one million trees in Nebraska. And whereas not only can trees reduce erosion of valuable topsoil, lower heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, while they're also a valuable renewable energy resource, and add to the beauty of our community. Whereas Wycomico County is proud to join our nation recognizing Arbor Day on the first Wednesday of April each year, consistent with the State of Maryland designation for Arbor Day. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect woodlands and increase tree cover that benefit the current and future generations done the sixteenth day of April 2024. So go plant some trees, and we have here, Colin, you want to say a few words?
Sure. Really, I just want to thank county council for recognizing such an important day in our community, you know? Trees are the lifeblood of what we have in the forests here, you know? Just don't blame them for all the pollen this week.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilman Hastings will also be reading the next proclamation to recognize National Celebrate Trails Day. Mr. Ellen Bailey with the Eastern Shore Land Conservancy and Eastern Shore Trails Network will be accepting the proclamation.
So this is proclamation, National Celebrate Trails Day, whereas hosted on the fourth Saturday in April, Celebrate Trails Day is an annual spring celebration of America's trails, and whereas started by the Rails to Trails Conservancy in 2013, National Celebrate Trails Day encourages people to get outside and enjoy the nation's trails and trail systems. Whereas National Celebrate Trails Day is an opportunity to experience and enjoy the impact of trails, and whereas trails provide plenty of places to get outside and to be, and to bring incredible value to our everyday lives by contributing to the well-being of people, places, and the planet. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council proclaims April 27, 2024, as National Celebrate Trails Day in Wycomico County, and urges all citizens to get outside, get outside and enjoy your local trails, which I will say, by the way, April 27 is my mom's birthday, and we are going to go hiking on some trails, though not in Wycomico County, but you should do so. So, thank you all for being here. Want to say a few words?
Yes, on behalf of Eastern Shore Land Conservancy and the Eastern Shore Regional Trail Network Steering Committee, thank you so much for issuing this proclamation. Trails add so much value to our lives by helping to connect people to parks, giving kids safe access to ride their bikes to school, economic development, think about any place that you'd like to visit, whether it is a colonial town in the U.S., a medieval town in Europe, Disney World, Legoland, amusement parks, these are places that you like to go because they're places that are walkable. They encourage people to get out, use their legs, and enjoy meeting other people and enjoying the sights. So thank you so much for this.
Next, we have a proclamation to recognize National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Mr. John Cooper, the 9/11 Specialist Chief Communications Supervisor is here, and Councilman Shane Baker will be reading the proclamation.
So this is a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, whereas National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week recognizes the dedicate, dedicated men and women who answer calls for help at 911 centers across the country, and whereas 911 specialists provide the first critical contact for those in need of emergency services, and in the midst of a crisis, obtain vital information from callers to rapidly link them to first responders, and sometimes dispense vital lifesaving information themselves, and whereas the Wycomico County Department of Emergency Services employs highly trained and dedicated 911 specialists who are on duty 24 hours a day, every day of the year, and often go unrecognized for the work they perform, which enhances the safety of the entire community. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims the week of April 14, April 14, 2024, a National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Wycomico County, and thank all 911 specialists for their dedicated service to the community. I got it out. Want to say a few words?
Thank you. I just want to take a few seconds and thank the council and the executive's office for always making sure that we have the support that we have. Like that said, sometimes we're not recognized, but it's all right. When 911 rings, you know that we're going to be there, you're going to get the best service that we can provide for all the citizens that come through Wycomico and live in Wycomico. We have a great team. We had some staffing issues that were, we're working hard at maintaining, so that way we can continue to provide a great service to the citizens of the county and to the team that's not here. We had unfortunately had some few other members that were going to come with us today, but due to life happening and multiple emergencies happening, and then being volunteers at their fire departments, they were unable to come and thank you as well, but thank you all. Thank you to the council president of the Fire Association for being here, and I see Rob's here with Salisbury. They are supportive of us and well, and I'd like to thank them while they're in presence too. Thank you.
Next proclamation is a special one for this council, because it's a proclamation to recognize the Wycomico County Rising Star winner. I say that because former council member and vice president Bill McCain is a benefactor for this, for this particular award, and, and he and his wife Teresa actually are, so we're going to have, this is presented by Shani Shields. Bill, you want to come on up and bring a special guest? If you could just briefly announce who you are for the public, can you maneuver a mic over for them, Shane, so that it's, it gets on, on page fourteen? It's the way we have to do it, sorry. Bill, if you could announce and then let everybody.
I'll go first, and I'm Bill McCain, and I'll make a quick comment before we do the proclamation. My wife Teresa, myself, five years ago, we wanted to do something to give back to the hardworking teachers. My wife was a lifelong educator in Wycomico County and a former Teacher of the Year, and we wanted to be able to recognize the new teachers. They work so hard, and it's tough when you're, especially in those early years, and so we created the Rising Star Award to recognize them, and you know, the attendance, hopefully that will encourage them and keep them in our system, and will be here for years to come. And I'll point out, there's actually two Rising Star recipients here today, because when we started that award, our first recipient was Deborah Reynolds, and you're going to hear that name again here in a minute, so I kind of wanted to mention that. And I'll, I'll make a comment about our recipient here in a minute.
Okay.
Okay. Whereas new teachers who successfully completed their first year in Wycomico County schools and are now in their second year were eligible for the Rising Star Award, which was established to recognize and support teachers who are excelling in their first years in the profession. And whereas Ms. Ashley Jones Purnell, a math teacher at Wycomico High School, was selected as a finalist for the Rising Star Award, and whereas after a careful selection process, Ms. Ashley Jones Purnell was named the 2425 Wycomico County Rising Star Award winner for showing ingenuity and amazing service to her students and school. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council congratulates Ms. Ashley Jones Purnell for being named the 2425 Wycomico County Rising Star Award winner, done this sixteenth day of April 2024.
My name is Ashley Jones Purnell. I am the winner of the Rising Star Award. Grateful to be here. First of all, I want to thank God for giving me this opportunity. Also, thank all educators for choosing to serve our young people, and thank you for Mr. McCain and his wife for seeing something in me, allowing me to be the winner of the Rising Star Award, and again, thank you for my principal, Dr. Blake, who also gave me that yes, to be an opportunity to be an educator for Wycomico High School. Again, thank you.
We need to have special proclamations as well to the Wycomico County 2024, 2025 Teacher of the Year finalists, and these are the best of the best, so we really appreciate them being here today, and it will go to the podium, please. It'll be presented by Vice President Jeff Merritt.
With assistance from?
Special assistance.
With special assistance, Councilman Hastings. Up to the podium, if, yep, right up here, if you don't mind. Good to have you here today, Doctor.
Good morning.
If you want to stand at the podium, you certainly may.
Before we, before we get started, I just want to do a special acknowledgement to Dr. Eagle, who I met thirty years ago, literally 1994, Mardella Middle and High School. He was led beyond the limits, and he's been a great mentor. He's the, you know, he's the, he's the godfather to my, to my niece. He was at my wedding. He's just an awesome human being, and I couldn't be more proud to have him up here as part of this. So I just want a special acknowledgement to my friend. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, but I just want to say, Dr. Eagle, we love you.
I love you, Jeff. All right. You're going to do that.
Oh, yeah. Do you want to bring up the individual? So, all right, just a couple comments. I think we're all well aware of the challenges and the hard work that all of the teachers in our county do each and every day, so I don't think we can recognize our teachers enough, but these three individuals are really special because they were Teacher of the Year finalists, and can we read them separately in full?
Have you choose.
Yeah, okay. So the first one I have is for Mr. Jared Cooper, the 2024, 2025 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist, whereas Mr. Jared Cooper, a physics teacher at James M. Bennett High School, was chosen amongst many outstanding educators to represent James M. Bennett High School as a 2024, 2025 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year semifinalist, and whereas after an extensive interview process of the semifinalists, Mr. Cooper scored in the top four amongst his peers and was named a Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist, and whereas Mr. Cooper joins a distinguished group of Wycomico County educators who have been recognized for demonstrating outstanding leadership, dedication to the education of our children, and professional achievement. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council congratulates Mr. Jared Cooper for being named a 2024, 2025 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist, done the sixteenth day of April 2024, signed by all members of the Wycomico County Council. We'll get pictures. All right? And congratulations.
I'll read this one off. Dr. Harlan Eagle, 2025 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist, whereas Dr. Harlan Eagle, a physical, physical education and health teacher at West Salisbury Elementary School, was chosen amongst the many outstanding educators to represent West Salisbury Elementary School as a Teacher of the Year semifinalist, after, whereas after an exclusive interview process, he's scored in the top four among his peers and joins a distinguished group, the folks up here, and he's also, I should add, just an incredible community advocate with things like Camp Odyssey, runs numerous, runs, or was it?
Races.
Yeah, newer races and others. And he's just an awesome human being, so we have Dr. Harlan Eagle, and then I'll turn it for third.
I've got a few years on Councilman Hastings, so I don't read quite as fast. The next one I have is for Rachel Thompson, a 2024, 2025 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist, whereas Ms. Rachel Thompson, a math teacher at Salisbury Middle School, was chosen amongst the many outstanding educators to represent Salisbury Middle School as a 2024, 2025 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year semifinalist, and whereas after an extensive interview process of the semifinalists, Ms. Thompson scored in the top four amongst her peers and was named a Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist, and whereas Ms. Thompson joins a distinguished group of Wycomico County educators who have been recognized for demonstrating outstanding leadership, dedication of our, to the education of our children, and professional achievement. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council congratulates Ms. Rachel Thompson for being named a 2024, 2025 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist, done the sixteenth day of April 2024, signed by the Wycomico County Council. Congratulations. All right, so you guys get to talk, and we get to step aside.
I always joke about how I found a way to not only judge children, but also talk and get paid for it, so, but I'm, and I know that all three of us are very, very honored and humbled to be able to, to represent our respective schools and all the educators here in Wycomico County. I'm a physics teacher, and one of the historical figures that I greatly respect is Sir Isaac Newton, and one thing that he famously said was that if he has seen further than others, it's because he stood on the shoulders of giants. I would not have been able to, none of us would have been able to make it to where we are and accomplish what we've been able to accomplish without the support and help of our administrators, of the county as a whole, our families, and our coworkers, and so I don't know if any of you want to add anything?
I just want to add, it's a great honor. I appreciate you all. I appreciate the Board of Ed and the Dr. Stoffer and Tracy and the whole group, and but it's really special that my principal, Mr. Benz, I love working at his school, being a tiger. Let me hear you roar. Roar! And to be here with Josh, it's, it's, it's true honor. I'm so proud of Josh and all he's accomplished, and keeping you all straight now. It's, it's, it's a great honor, and being part of this group with Debbie and Jared and Rachel, so thank you so much.
So I don't know if you are familiar with the interview process for Teacher of the Year. Year. There is a public speaking component that I don't personally feel like sell at, but we're going to go with it anyway. I want to say thank you. I can, you know, repeat what both of my finalists shared. Being a teacher is oftentimes thankless, and that's not why any teacher should or does become a teacher. But it sure does feel nice to get a little recognition every now and then. I love what I do, and I'm so fortunate that I found a profession that I get excited to go to every day. And I think that it speaks to the support that the county, both the Board of Ed and the city of Salisbury and Wacomiko County, do provide for us in this community. So thank you again.
Okay. Do we want to do a group picture?
Pass it on.
Thank you.
She's also a colleague with your favorite camp, the Cady.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. We were...
I think I'd like to recognize the best dressed man in Wacomiko County.
Stay right there. One more.
It's a Senate citation.
And now we have the proclamation to recognize the 2024-2025 Wacomiko County Teacher of the Year. Jane Wim will be presenting this proclamation. Yes, without a doubt. Thank you. Wonderful.
So this is Debbie Reynolds. Okay. Debbie Reynolds, okay. 2024 to 2025 Wacomiko County Teacher of the Year. Whereas Debbie Reynolds, a seventh grade world history teacher at Wacomiko County Middle, Y Middle, Wacomiko Middle School, was named the 2024 to 2025 Wacomiko County Teacher of the Year and will represent Wacomiko County Schools in the Maryland Teacher of the Year Recognition Program. And whereas Debbie Reynolds has taught in Wacomiko County Public Schools since August 2017 and has been a world history teacher at Wacomiko Middle School since 2017 to 2018 school year. And whereas Ms. Reynolds has the first recipient of the McCain Foundation's Rising Star Award for outstanding second-year schools in 2019. And where Ms. Reynolds is a member of the Kappa Delta Phi, a prestigious educational honor society, and she was featured in the Houghton-Milflin... Houghton-Milflin-Harcourt Podcast Teachers of the Year, Teachers in America, which highlights the stories of educators from around the country. Now therefore, the Wacomiko County Council congratulates Ms. Debbie Reynolds for being named the 2024-2025 Wacomiko County Teacher of the Year.
Thank you to everybody here today. I am so excited to be representing the very county which educated me. I'm a graduate of James M. Bennett, 2010. I look forward to just promoting change and giving students and staff a voice, and I just look forward to the future. Thank you to everybody here for supporting me, Dr. Stoffer, my superintendent, my principal, Mrs. Branum, my finalists, all the semifinalists, council. Thank you for everything that everybody has done and just please keep supporting Wacomiko County Public Schools. Our students are really great, and I just can't wait to see our county continue to excel. Thank you.
Ms. Hurley, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is the Wacomiko County delegation legislative recap on the 2024 General Assembly session.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Delegate Senator?
They're all outside.
Yeah, we'll grab them. Thank you.
President, you have your A-game going on these proclamations today.
Yes, we do. We do. A lot of people do a lot of hard work around here.
Thank you. That's very kind.
Yeah. Bunch of them.
Thank you.
I should have bet. I should have bet.
You're always between us.
Good morning to everybody here. We're very pleased to have each of you here today to share what information you have as to how Annapolis is working and what we've managed to accomplish. Share that not only with the council here, but also with the public. I think it's always important, every chance we have, that they recognize what hard work each and every one of you does every day, in and out. And again, this is the opportunity for you to let us know how the last year has gone and where we think we're heading in the future. We'll start with introductions to the left and with the...
Sure. Good morning. Delegate Sheree Sample Hughes, representing District 37A, which is Wacomiko and Dorchester Counties, and glad to be back here in this room.
Former council member.
How you all doing?
Doing great.
Good, good. Delegate Carl Anderson Jr., representing Wacomiko County, Chair of the Wacomiko Delegation, the one that you deal with for all these bills and budget requests in Annapolis. And I will say, Mr. Council President, do not ever take vacation during session again. You're heretofore banned from that because the wheels fell off some things while you were going. And I'm sorry that we had to bother you in Hawaii. I really am. I'm sure you're having a wonderful time. I put your business out there. I did. Yes, wonderful time, great restaurants, and fine, you know, non-alcoholic beverages, you know? I'm sure it was a wonderful time, and I'm sorry we had to keep bothering you on that to get everything...
My wife suggested I could take the next flight home right then if I wanted to.
Yeah.
She'd meet me like...
Kind of wish you had, but I'm glad you did. We were able... We did okay. But man, it was really an interesting moment. But anyway...
Appreciate your work.
Yeah.
Senator?
Senator Mary Beth Carosa, representing District 38, and that's Worcester, Wacomiko, and Somerset Counties. I serve on the Senate Education, Energy, and Environment Committee, which also has jurisdiction over housing, community development, veterans, county and municipal issues, elections, and ethics. So pretty much a lot of the issues that you're working on, and I appreciate all the feedback and proud to serve with my colleagues who are well positioned on committees for us to work together on your priorities.
Delegate Chris Adams, serving Talbot, Dorchester, Caroline, and Wacomiko Counties. This is my 10th year in office. I do serve on Economic Matters Committee. I'm also the Chair of the Eastern Shore Delegation. We do indeed have a true team with the Eastern Shore Delegation from Cecil County down to Somerset County, working together on issues in a unified manner. Privileged to serve and happy to be here today and look forward to sharing some details about what happened and didn't happen during session this year.
You can just speak.
Just talk. It kicks on. That's pretty...
Yeah, you're good.
It's listening.
Automated.
Well, good morning, Johnny Mouts, State Senator for District 37. That's west side of Wacomiko, right into Salisbury, and goes north, you know, Dorchester, Caroline, and Talbot Counties. I serve on the Senate Finance Committee. This was my second year in the Maryland Senate, and it was a busy year for me. There was a lot of things going on. I'm looking forward to talking about it with everyone. I just want to thank you for everyone who's reached out to me about specific issues, local issues. It's pretty tough to be everywhere. We have a... For, you know, in the General Assembly, if you look at the geographic responsibilities for different representatives, you know, we on the shore carry a much larger burden in geographic size. Our districts are much larger than many others. So all your phone calls, emails, communication, anything like that is a huge help to us because that's only as strong as we can be. So, Mr. President, I apologize if you were put on the spot earlier, but we appreciate the support.
Thank you very much. We'll give you the floor, however you may choose to present. Senator?
So maybe I'll do a little broad brush and then some of my colleagues who were involved in the details.
Go for it.
We have a total of about half an hour, 20 minutes, 30 minutes.
No, no. Well, did you want to start with some?
You got it.
So broad brush, again, we want to thank you. When I say broad brush, there's always an unexpected twist to a session that you can never see coming. And of course, that was...
There's one?
Well, for us, the Key Bridge collapse at the end of session was something that obviously was unplanned, but it did force us to kind of shift. But we did so as a state in a bipartisan way. That's, you know, the Port Act that we ended up supporting actually, you know, has effects on the Delmarva region as well. So it's something... And also, I just wanted to make the comment that on our last day, it was solar eclipse day, so it added a different twist. We, I think, we were focused a lot on the budget. I know Delegate Anderton will focus on that. But we were glad to hold the line and hold off a lot of the proposed tax increases and fees that were proposed on the House side. Actually, the Senate Democrat leadership kind of took a line of holding those off. So we think we ended up in a good position for that. Again, Delegate Anderton will go into a lot of the local projects, which he's on appropriations to lead. I wanted to specifically thank the council and the local community on an effort that, had this community not been involved, I believe never would have happened. And my colleague, Delegate Sheree Sample Hughes, can go into more detail about it. But if you'll recall, we as a community, during the time leading up to session, and especially after the mass shootings involving juveniles in Salisbury in the summer, there was a very concerted effort at the local level. It involved the State's Attorney's Office, Superintendent Michael Stoffer and his team, the local business community, and faith-based leaders, and an effort to really recognize that we had a serious juvenile crime issue, not only on the shore but across the state, and a recognition that we had to kind of force the hand of the Maryland Department of Juvenile Services to recognize that that was an issue and to see what we could do to address those issues. And again, specifically, want to give credit to the State's Attorney's Office for bringing forward bills that ended up being included in bipartisan legislation. And I really believe, as a result of that, the leadership in both the House and the Senate decided they would do their own juvenile justice crime bills. And that, again, was a result of this grassroots effort. And now, the legislation that was passed, I just want to briefly note that there were pieces of it that this community pushed for when it comes to supervision, detention, and notification. And under the law, we now are able to have some accountability of those 10- to 12-year-olds that really were some serious offenders, but were not... There was no follow-up with the Department of Juvenile Services. This legislation addresses that. It also allows for some extended probation when needed and allows the courts to have more authority with some of the dangerous juveniles. Again, it's not everything that we put forward, but the fact, had we not done that grassroots effort together as a community, I'm absolutely convinced we never would have had the leadership saying, "We need to do something on juvenile crime."
That was a big step forward.
It was a big step. And, you know, also wanted to let you know on the local bills, we do appreciate when you came up, the feedback, so we can move those forward. So just wanted to... Couple highlights from the feedback, but tie it back to what you all did before we even went back into session. Now, turn it over.
Sure. So this year, I am assigned to the Judiciary Committee. And as the Senator was just speaking about, that was really our number-one priority this year, was to address juvenile crime. And what is quite concerning for me, even still to this moment, is that the Secretary for Department of Juvenile Services never came before us as a committee. And prior to going to session, I attended a meeting in Dorchester County, and he was there, and I was very disappointed in his nonchalant attitude regarding juvenile crime and the fact that our data, not only from Wacomiko, but Dorchester, was not accurate, meaning that it wasn't reflective of the jurisdiction challenges, meaning that the magistrate had a different report, the police officers had a different report on the types of crimes that were happening. And so this did not make its way to the state office, which, again, is quite concerning. So at this juncture, in addition to what Senator just mentioned, we made some significant changes. One in particular that you probably won't hear a lot about is that if there is a minor that is on the sex offender registry, they will no longer be able to attend physically school in the state of Maryland. What they will be able to do is receive home hospital care or that type of tutoring, if you will. But that's a significant piece. Some people are saying that there might be a challenge with the Constitution, but it isn't, according to our Attorney General. But what we're trying to get at, unfortunately, in Baltimore County, there were young ladies that were unfortunately assaulted by a minor that was a sex offender and on the registry, and the school system knew about it. So not only are we addressing the issue when the youth are coming into contact with law enforcement, we're also addressing it at another level as well. One thing that we'll probably see right at the forefront with this particular bill is House Bill 814, is that the time where a juvenile will come into contact with law enforcement, and law enforcement will have the ability to say, "I think that this child needs to get supervision by Department of Juvenile Services," and follow it through. And Department of Juvenile Services will have at least two days that they have to respond. And you might say, "Two days? Is that too long?" Well, it went from 15 to two. So there is a significant difference there. And so if we are experiencing auto thefts and things of that nature, then you will have... Where they're immediately, on this bill, immediately would get children in need of services. So you'll see some differences. I just pray that this is one step towards curbing the challenges that we're having with our young people. But that bill in particular, I think, is one that we really probably need to really keep our eyes on and see what's working and what's not, but stay in contact with our local law enforcement in particular. And then speaking about law enforcement, we, on a brighter note, I think that we were beneficial in moving the legislation as it relates to apprenticeships. As you know, we have a significant reduction in persons signing up to be law enforcement officers throughout the nation. But in particular, in Maryland, our bill is called the GAPS Act, but it's really trying to close the gap there for public safety and workforce development. And so with that, this is another way to get persons who are interested in coming into that field, for them to actually be a part of the process before totally signing up to be in that space of public safety. So that in of itself, to me, is something very beneficial. And then the last two things outside of juvenile justice and public safety highlight that there are two pieces of legislation that speaks to property tax credits. There's one where it's House Bill 823 authorizes local governments to grant a property tax credit for an apartment building, a condominium building, or a building owned by a cooperative housing corporation if the owner makes fire improvement safeties improvement by July... Excuse me, after July 1st, 2024. So... But that bill in particular, I think, is one that we really probably need to really keep our eyes on and see what's working and what's not, but stay in contact with our local law enforcement in particular. And then speaking about law enforcement, we, on a brighter note, I think that we were beneficial in moving the legislation as a result, as it relates to apprenticeships. As you know, we have a significant reduction in persons signing up to be law enforcement officers throughout the nation. But in particular, in Maryland, our bill is called the GAPS Act, but it's really trying to close the gap there for public safety and workforce development. And so with that, this is another way to get persons who are interested in coming into that field, for them to actually be a part of the process before totally signing up to be in that space of public safety. So that in of itself, to me, is something very beneficial. And then the last few things outside of juvenile justice and public safety highlight that there are two pieces of legislation that speaks to property tax credits. There's one where it's House Bill 823 authorizes local governments to grant a property tax credit for an apartment building, a condominium building, or a building owned by a cooperative housing corporation if the owner makes fire improvement safeties, improvement by July, excuse me, after July 1st, 2024. So there are a lot of enabling pieces of legislation that we passed this year, but I often know that people don't get to understand what is available. And so then therefore, they're not, you know, applying for the property tax credits. But that one in particular is one that I think that should certainly move the needle. And then with some funding, it was great to see that, you know, HVA system at our library is going to be, you know, funded in an area of need. So, but I know Delegate Anderton will talk more about budget stuff. But overall, session was quite interesting. I think this year I had the best seat in the House.
You did. You had my seat from last year. Yeah.
So with no longer being in leadership, I have my, I reclaim my time, and I get to be who I am. And I actually had the best seat in the House, Delegate Adams, Otto, and Hartman, all of us, we just kind of, you know, bonded and, you know, moved the needle on things that we needed to vote on. And, you know, while being in a position of kind of like, oh, we don't want to really hear what you got to say, we still, you know, said what we had to say. And so it is what it is, and session, I'm glad it's over.
We appreciate your strong leadership. When you had that role, it was, it was very, it was excellent. And, and so we were glad you were able to do that, not only for the, not only for Wycomica County, for the state of Maryland as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's very, very well done.
Thank you.
Good.
So, where are we? Okay. Well, Delegate Chris Adams, it's good to be here with you. And this is my 10th year in office. It's been a privilege each of those years to serve you in Annapolis. And each of these years, I think we've addressed the Wycomica County Council. I do serve on Economic Matters Committee, so banking, energy policy, business regulation, that's the world I live in as a business owner. And there's only one bill I want to emphasize that came out of our committee this year, which was addressed earlier, which was the Port Act. This was an 11th hour bill. It was a tragedy, the Francis Scott Key Bridge. I was in my hotel room in the morning, waking up to that news, and immediately understood the nature of that problem. And the question was, would the legislature be able to act soon enough? Because you knew it was going to be about money, and it was going to be about action. And the last day of session, we were pushing that bill through. Republicans and Democrats came together to address two main issues under the Port Act. One was enhanced benefits for UI, the workers that aren't able to work at the time, help them get the UI benefits, also small business dollars to help these small businesses that are closed or having to move their operations. The appropriation was $250 million. The legislature is granting the cabinet, the governor's cabinet, to do it in $25 million tranches or increments, if you will. The first one of those $25 million was actually addressed this past week. And so those monies go toward the cleanup, they go toward those benefits that I mentioned earlier. The other thing that the bill did is it raised the bonding authority for the state of Maryland to $4 billion, $4 billion, so we can start not only with the cleanup, but the reconstruction of the Francis Scott Key Bridge. It's important that you, you know, recognize that the state of Maryland, through some conversations you may have heard, that the federal government is going to frankly pay for the replacement of the bridge. But the practical reality is that, you know, the state of Maryland will have to forward fund that construction. It may come later, it may not come at all. And so we had to grant that money now to allow that. The bond dollars get reimbursed through toll revenue. And I just close in saying that bridge was just not just a state or a local bridge, it was a national and a global impact by having that bridge not there. Some of our traffic has gone to New Jersey, certainly gone out of state. We want them to come back. So we need to address this sooner rather than later, and let's pray that that actually happens for our state. The other thing I just want to share and just talk on briefly, because I'm a Republican and I don't want to share my position on the budget, I don't need to go into details, which you might hear later, but we do every year have to pass one bill, and that is the operating budget for the state of Maryland. I have voted for that budget every year, and I've voted for it this year. It is forced by the Constitution to be balanced. This year, that balance came through the lens of taking $500 million from the rainy day fund to do that. So I can support a bill, provided we're not going down a path of fiscal irresponsibility. The difficulty came this year with the Burfa, and you'll hear later, but the point is that most of the transportation shortfalls, the education shortfalls, happened through the lens of, we've got to raise taxes, or we need to cut spending. And that Burfa, the other bill, was very difficult politically, because we want to be able to fund these things. I believe we, as a state, have priorities that have to happen. But at the end of the day, we had a $64 billion budget. And $64 billion, the first year I came in, it was $40 billion. So we were spending just a tremendous amount of money. It's worth the conversation about what's going to happen over the next three years. We expect to have a $3 billion deficit. And as council members, as you're thinking about what happened under the O'Malley administration, as you're thinking about what happened 15, 20 years ago, you know what happens? They start sending unfunded mandates down to the state, like we did with teacher pensions, for example, HUR revenues. And I worry tremendously about the budget as a Republican, as a Chair of the Eastern Shore delegation, as a member of your delegation, as you're thinking about your budget priorities moving forward. The other thing that I'd ask you to pay attention to is under the O'Malley administration, fees and tax increases came left and right. The governor, over the last year, raised 250 fees throughout the state. And think about the fees for a minute. They go to licensing certain programs, but these dollars can often be raided and then used for general fund expenses. Pay attention to what's happening over the next couple of years about how we are balancing the budget next year. It might be the first year I vote against the budget because of these, these reasons. There are a couple of bills of local interest that I passed this year. One was House Bill 1512, which related to the Bay Restoration Fund, municipal wastewater facilities, and the sunset repeal. Senator Eckhart and I worked in 2020 to pass a bill that allowed failing septic systems to connect to municipal wastewater facilities. For that to happen, there had to be a funding agreement with Maryland Department of Environment. You had to be under construction with either ENR or BNR level treatment. This bill this year removed the sunset and made this pilot permanent. I would ask you to consider, in this county, as you're marrying issues of this magnitude, which we hear about all the time, how we can use that piece of legislation to further your interests. That's how I would see that bill and its application. The other bill I passed this year was House Bill 557, related to the sales and use tax exemption, aircraft parts and equipment repeal of the reporting requirement, and extension of sunset. This bill, I said in my session letter, bucks the trend of higher taxes and fees, and actually did a tax credit, tax exemption. We did that for the aircraft industry throughout the state. Co-sponsor from the Senate was Paul Quarterman from Hagerstown. And in Wycomica County, your airport expected this to pass, worked hard, and you worked hard to see that it passed. Because we in Wycomica County want the growth of that airport, this is one important element, to be able to do the repair and maintenance. It's easy to take an airplane and fly it to Delaware, or fly it to Virginia, it takes 10, 15 minutes to go where these tax exemptions are. All we're doing as a state is saying, we want to compete with our regional states for that business. And as you're developing a portfolio of growth and opportunity with the airport, this bill was a critical part of that. And I appreciate all my colleagues' support getting that bill through. It was not easy to get that kind of bill through ways and means this year, and we appreciate all that. The last bill I'd like to talk on was Senator Mouts led on oyster management, so I'll leave that to him. That was his bill, and I was pleased to be co-sponsor on that. I did address House Bill 998, unemployment insurance. We have a real problem with COVID and the COVID-era world of hiring and people coming to work. I, as an employer, have seen many people who make application to come for an interview and just not show up. There is a issue called ghosting, which is, I want, as a person, to stay on unemployment insurance as long as I can, and you're required to be actively looking for work. And this issue started during COVID, continues now. The legislature, the Democrat leadership understood the concern with our UI trust fund and how we really need to be guardians and stewards of that money. If people are committing insurance fraud, if they're out signing up for interviews and doing all the things and then reporting it to the UI, but not actually going through and conducting the interview, that's a problem. So this bill works with the Department of Labor, which I did during session this year to address that, and I'd report back to you next year what the findings are. I'm going to close by saying, these 10 years have been such a privilege, and working with this team in a diverse background has been a life experience that is hard to rival. And anytime you call me, I think you know I call back and try to resolve issues and be active and engaged, and please continue that as I continue my service for Wycomica County and the state of Maryland.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Senator Mouts, we would also, just as a personal privilege, like to extend our sympathies for the loss of your mother. She's a great woman, and we really would want to know that.
And I tell you, I've just been blessed with so many people, you know, that have reached out to me and said things to me. And I was blessed to have a wonderful mom for a full lifetime. And I just think about all the people in the world that don't, either don't have that opportunity or don't even have the friends and the support to reach out to them. And it's, it's a hard thing, and everybody goes through it, but at the same time, I just look in the mirror and just, it's just wonderful. So thank you, everybody, for keeping me in your thoughts, and I try to keep everybody in my thoughts, because losing, losing a loved one is a, is a hard thing. And it was particularly hard for me in my situation, but, but thank you. And that definitely had an impact on me this session. You know, it happened right during the, you know, going up to the crossover day. So I missed a number of votes right before a crossover. However, we voted those bills, the ones that were approved during crossover, they come back. So it's, I got a vote on, on everything. It just was, it was an interesting way to, to go through the legislative session. But with that in mind, you know, just say a prayer for mom. She's, she's listening now. But, you know, I, I thought this session was unique of, of, so this would be, actually, sorry, 12th, 12th year, 12th year. God, I went in 2014. But, you know, in the first, in the first, did I get the numbers right?
10.
Close, man.
We did 10 years.
Good enough. Okay, all right, okay. You know, 10, 10, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 10.
I'm sorry, not five-year terms or four-year terms. I guess it's starting to add up a little bit, but, okay. So, but, but the first, first eight years, I felt like the legislative arm was always battling the executive arm. And I felt, you know, there are, there are strong beliefs and there are strong feelings in these policies that are put forward. However, I felt at times those policies were infused with not politics but power, and it was a legislative versus the executive. And that power structure has changed now in Annapolis. And my sense from this past session, not so much last session, because everybody was still getting, getting their, their, their footing and getting their priorities, we had a number of new members, new administration, things like that. But this session, to me, was very different in that the legislative body acted more deliberately on, on principle rather than, than power. And I think you see that in the change in policy on juvenile justice. I've seen it come up a number of times in a number of different areas. And I'll use, I'll use Ag as an example. There was a bill on DAF, and a bill came in on DAF that would have put Department of Environment right in the middle of regulating DAF, which was very problematic and very concerning. That bill was amended, so it's now handled by the Department of Agriculture. It's still problematic. However, it was crafted in such a way that I believe that most affected are going to be able to deal with the Department of Agriculture. So, you know, I've seen a shift in the legislative body, and I think it's important for the county to keep that in mind, because in the past, I know we've come up with some ideas, and the answer's been, oh, well, that'll never be accepted in Annapolis. That'll never get through the legislative body. I don't, I don't kind of, I don't feel that way, and maybe not the entire delegation shares that sentiment. Maybe it's because I'm in the Senate now and not in the House of Delegates. I don't know, but I just noticed there's been a more openness and a more interest in, in fixing problems rather than, than pushing things through. Delegate Adams mentioned oyster management. That's another very good example. That's something that I've been deeply involved with, and it really doesn't come up in this chamber very much. However, it does affect this county. There's a huge commercial fishing industry affecting Wycomico County. And for years, the state of Maryland, since 2013, 2014, they switched to a sanctuary system for recruiting oysters and improving the oyster health of the bay. That started about 10 years ago, and it's been an utter failure. There's 51 sanctuaries, those were once productive oyster bottom. Only 40, only three of those 51 have actually improved. The other 48 can be classified as either failed or dead.
They predicted that 10 years ago, too. You know, we
Yes, yeah, yes, yes. And in the meantime, we've probably put over $50 million into the bay. And, and the idea that the legis, now, the Department of Natural Resources has not embraced this yet. However, the legislative body has, all of a sudden, they approved this bill that said, wait a minute, these sanctuaries, you might want to do something about that. And then they give them to the department, the authority to go in, not necessarily to harvest the sanctuaries, but to do things on the sanctuaries, just good, common sense policy, which is a total shift. And I was, I was happy to see that.
Thank you.
A lot of it happened while I was out, and it passed unanimously, which was, which was another great, a great sign. And, you know, and there were some other bills that came up that were very problematic. They weren't discussed, but they, but, but they weren't approved. There was a 11% excise tax for, to fund trauma centers that was going to be levied on ammunition, guns, and gun parts and things. And there was a problem with the bill, it was unconstitutional. But in the past, we've seen things like that pushed through, and it would have been very detrimental. It would have enormous impact. Regardless of your thoughts on firearms and things like that, it just was not a good way to fund trauma centers. And, and it passed, like I said, that bill would have passed, but, but it didn't pass. I sit on the Senate Finance Committee, and you wouldn't think this, but healthcare comes up in our committee. It's something I spend a lot of time on. And something that's a major concern is the state of healthcare in Maryland, the Medicare waiver. We're one of the lowest-paying states for physicians, you know, and you hear about this time and time again, but we have a real serious problem in our state right now in the way our healthcare system's being managed and how it's being operated. Title Health is one of the most efficient hospitals in the state of Maryland, if not the most efficient hospital in the state of Maryland. And it's facing enormous challenges right now with the way reimbursement works in the state, recruiting professionals to come in. And we put some policies together to try to bring people into the healthcare profession. However, the bottom line is, if the money isn't there, there are going to be gaps, and there are going to be shortages, and there's going to be all sorts of issues. Now, we've come up with some funding for trauma, it's sort of Band-Aid-type approach, but it's something for the council, the county, definitely to keep in mind, because, because there are real concerns. And I don't know about the future of that Medicare waiver and how our health, how our health system's going to continue, say, the next 10 to 20 years. But that's something that's come up in our committee routinely, and we've resorted to this patchwork of passing bills to try to fix this problem and that problem. However, there isn't a seamless web on how we're becoming, you know, the most innovative and the most effective system for our constituents. So that's, that's a problem, and, and it's something to keep in mind. And you've heard a lot about, a lot of the other issues. I could go on. I worked on a number of local, local bills this year. I didn't come in with any statewide proposals. I want to thank the county for working with us as we're getting up to session and those deadlines that we have, getting those letters of support and things like that. They were really important, and I hope that we did a, a good job as far as responding and making sure that everybody was on the same page, because that's always the chaos when session starts.
So thank you very much, and it was an incredible honor to, to be able to represent Wycomico, District 37, in the State Senate this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Delegate Anderson?
All right. So we'll try to be brief. I know you said 20 minutes for everybody, and I think we blew way past that. So we'll do our best here to, to wrap up. But I wanted to fill you in on a couple of things. First off, to, to the restoration of money back to Warwick through decayed formula funding.
That was huge.
That was big. That was something we wanted to take care of. It may not be exactly where we wanted, but we're, we're in a much better situation than we were beforehand. The same thing with how we use the revenues. Seems like we're always talking about that, you know? But, you know, once again, it's fixed again until the next time it needs fixing. So, you know, we were able to, to fix that again. A lot of good things in the budget. I wanted to talk real quick, we'll, we'll go through the budget, and we'll go into the two local bills that you sent us to Annapolis with. So we secured funding at the last minute for a lot of these, thanks to some kind of internal maneuvering. You know, in a very tight budget, there was, there was not a lot of opportunity to add projects in, so we kind of had to take and, and get creative with existing money that was in there to move some around. And we were able to do that, I think, in a pretty cool fashion. You know, every year you learn something new, so now, you know, we have another avenue, which makes being told no much more difficult, so, which is good, because the goal is not to hear no. We want to find yes answers, and we did. Wycomico Humane Society, Mason Dixon Athletic Fields, I'm glad to see the superintendent here. Him and I need to have a conversation about the parking situation over there. This funding should help fast-track that, which is This funding should help fast-track that, uh, which is good for the folks that live on Folsky Lane in that area that have to deal with all the vehicular traffic nowadays, uh, going to the school. Uh, Delmore Fire Department, Eastern Shore Baseball Hall of Fame, uh, that is still in the original state since, it's been in since 1996. I don't think any of us are still in the, our original state since 1996, with the exception of maybe the council member from District Five. But, uh, the rest of us have seemed to change a little bit since 96. It's time for the, uh, Hall of Fame to do so. Arthur Purdue Stadium, many other projects, Salisbury University, Blackwell Hall, uh, Parkside High School, Life Crisis Center, who was here receiving an, an award earlier. Um, and I could, we could just keep going, but in an effort to save some time, we'll move on to the, uh, two pieces of legislation. Uh, one we'll highlight was for the, uh, for distilleries. As you know, Worcester County, uh, the senator here passed a bill a few years ago for the distilleries in Worcester County, uh, to be able to join the, kind of, the free market, if you will. And, um, I knew you were expecting, somebody was expecting me to say mart of competitive commerce, but no, it's the free market. Uh, so, we were able to do that this year in Wacomico County, and I'm excited for, uh, the owners, especially, I think of the Spring Hill Distillery. You know, I've been working with them for years through MDE, Department of Ag, Department of Commerce, Department of Labor. And now finally, they will be on equal footing with everyone else across the state. So, I appreciate you all sending me, sending us that bill to work with. Uh, the, the main one, though, was the, uh, the abolishment of the monopoly on, uh, on, uh, the way liquor's dispensed throughout the county. That's been around since prohibition. And, uh, so, it's kind of neat to say you did change something that's been around for 90 years. Uh, it was a lot of work, uh, and it was, I think it was done the right way. You know, we, you sent us up with a bill last year and there was some, uh, dis- you know, some, some concern over it, and so you had-
It wasn't complete.
It wasn't complete. So, we were able to do a more complete fashion this year. You know, you had the work group that went through. Uh, you know, but I learned some things with this bill. I've learned some things. Amazing, there's a group of people that I didn't know existed that collect bottles of liquor, that will spend $500, $800, $900 on a bottle of liquor and put it on a shelf and never drink it. So, I'm like, what? You know, first off, I mean, you know me, I'm not really a, a liquor connoisseur. I'm more of a cold duck, Colt 45-type person. But to see that and to learn about that was just fascinating to me.
Goes against, goes against all your instincts.
It does, yeah. It's like you just want to set it up there and look at it and have to, but hey, to each their own, you know? I mean, to each their own. I like Chinese buffets, a lot of people don't. Everybody has their thing. Uh, you know, but, so I learned about that this group of folks existed and they were up in arms thinking that they weren't going to be able to buy these high-dollar bottles of alcohol anymore. And there was so much misinformation that goes around. Every time we have a bill, it's like, there's, there's like this thread of misinformation that just gets strung through everything and is befuddling and, uh, really, uh, interesting to me how every year you can just see it kind of start threading its way through, and then we have to spend the time to unthread it and, and come back to reality and say what the legislature really does and really doesn't do. And, uh, so, you know, there were last-minute amendments trying to be thrown onto the bill as we had had the hearing and, you know, and we were able to fend that off. And thanks to good relationships across the island of Annapolis, you know, we were able to bring these bills home. And, and, uh, you know, every year I always say, you know, one of these bills is the most difficult thing I've worked with. I can put this one in that category, but I'm, I'm glad it's done and we can move on to the next thing. And I just appreciate, um, there's many more things we'll talk about, but we can stop. I mean, I just want to thank you for trusting me, uh, to handle these things for you. It's a responsibility I don't take lightly. You know, we have a great team. Everybody here has their own expertise. Uh, they have a lot more expertise than I do. Uh, I am the weakest link in this chain, but I can tell you this much, it's a very strong chain. Uh, so, but again, I just want to thank each and every one of you for, for reaching out to me, checking up on us to see how we're doing, for trusting us to be able to get things done. And I hope that the things that we've been able to secure in the budget and these pieces of legislation will do more to help our econ- our economy grow and flourish because that's kind of the name of the game, is to make sure everybody who wakes up in Wacomico County tomorrow has a better day than they had today. So-
Senator?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to personally thank Delegate Anderson as the Chair of the Wacomico County Delegation because a lot of us can focus on our other committee assignments and your other priorities because we know he's taken the lead, especially on the, the budget priorities. Um, the restoration of that $10 million for community colleges, as you know, was top priority for us. And then the local projects, um, you know, for instance, I, I wasn't sure where we were going to be with this budget, and Delegate Anderson helped me with securing, um, this funding for the Parsonsburg Fire Department, public safety being number one. Um, I also want to, I would be remiss if I didn't say in front of the whole council because you played such a role in this. Uh, one bill that did pass that you actually played a key role in is the, um, and all of us supported as a delegation, was the fallen heroes, uh, limit, eliminating the, um, the tax on the death benefits. And what I want to give you all first credit for is when we experienced that and the family experienced the, the brutal murder of Glenn Hilliard, um, you were there and, and turned that check around in record time for the family, a $500,000 death benefit check that you all worked together. And, and that, and that took a lot off of the family at a very difficult time. But what we didn't know at the time and didn't find out later, that of that $500,000 that Tashika Hilliard was being held liable on the tax end of $183,000 of it. And when this first was brought to your attention and to our attention, I think we first thought, there has to be a way to resolve this without legislation. And then we found out, no, we needed the legislation. And thanks to the support here, thanks to Sheriff Mike Lewis personally coming up and testifying, but really special appreciation to Tashika Hilliard, who came up in person, testified on both the House and the Senate side, speaking for all of the families of fallen heroes. And we were able to pass that. So, not only, uh, backdating and, and having that affect the Hilliard family, but to now know that we're taking care of the families of our fallen heroes, those killed in the line of duty. So, it started here, and I wanted to kind of bring it back and thank you and let you know that together we were successful for taking care of our future fallen heroes, their families, as well as the Hilliard family.
And we, and we thank you for that as well. And I would have to thank the council for their cooperation. Uh, Mike Lewis is on the phone at least three times a day for three weeks. I'm not kidding, so.
Real, real quick, I just want to echo what Mayor Beth said. That, that's probably the most important thing we did this session, uh, to be fair. I mean, to me, that, that, uh, and I'm glad you took the lead on that in the Senate, and I'm glad that, I know he's not here, but, but Wayne Hartman took the lead on that in the House, and he had to work with a last-minute amendment to, to his bill and, and when it got across, but everything was worked out. These two worked together perfectly on that legislation. They saw the viability and the need for that. And so, I just, I want to thank Mayor Beth and Wayne both. I mean, they did an amazing job on it. And that, to me, is probably the most important thing that was accomplished for us this session. But I, I want to give the, the governor a shout-out. On the Key Bridge, I mean, the way he, he has stood in the gap, uh, you never know the metal of a person until it's tested, and his has been tested politically, uh, with this catastrophe that has happened, and he's performed admirably, in my opinion. Um, I'm not getting paid to say this. I'm just saying it because I think it's the right thing to say, is that I think he's done an amazing job. And one of the channels will be open in a couple of weeks, and then the other cha- main channel will be open, they're ahead of schedule on that with the Army Corps of Engineers. And so, we're going to get that port open very soon. Uh, now, vehicular traffic, that's a couple more years away, but, but we're, we're making big progress on it. And I, I just wanted to give the governor a shout-out. He's done an amazing job.
And I know he's been down here and, and is, is an advocate for our airport, which is very important to us as well. He came down with the, with the, uh, President of the Senate, and we were glad to see him and have that exchange because they're very, they were very positive about it and given us a lot to look forward to. Uh, Josh?
Uh, I know we got, we're short on time, but I just, a couple of things, I just want to have a couple of comments and then, uh, kind of a forward-looking question. Uh, first of all, uh, you know, thank you all for what you do, your staff. I want to make sure we thank them. They're, you know, every time I interact with all your staff, it's just really fantastic. I'm proud to have them represent us. Uh, they mentioned the Key Bridge and that issue. Obviously, uh, you know, that's huge. Uh, you know, uh, living here my whole life, how many times have we joked about the, you know, half-heartedly, oh, if the Chesapeake Bay Bridge were to go down, at least, you know, the truth is, we can't-
Don't say that, I might be on it.
It's terrible. Not going, right.
Can't swim, bro.
Uh, a lot of people might have had thoughts about how, um, we wanted to be disconnected, but the truth is, we are so darn connected, our agricultural community, we would be in really tough shape. We're, we are, we've got folks that are waiting on a lot of things that are sitting there in the port right now. Um, so, I appreciate you all working so quickly, so hard to try to address that. Um, budget-related, you know, um, I, I wish the federal government balanced its budget as well as, uh, you all do in the state level. Uh, but I know we've got issues like the disparity grant that was supposed to be, um, I think we're losing, I saw, we were supposed to lose a little bit more money on that side of things.
I think the economy's growing for us, too. So, you may want to check your income tax receipts on that one.
However, we make sure that that, uh, continues. I appreciate that. Um, and then thank you again for getting the, the college, uh, money for the community college. It's a big deal. Um, I also want to thank, thank Senator, uh, Senator Bill 808, the, uh, anaerobic digestion. Um, that's a really big deal. Obviously, we, we, we went through the whole DAF situation. It was all kind of a horrible, tough situation, but we focused like, hey, let's make sure that we can at least use anaerobic digestion and keep that as an option.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Um, and then I'll just, um, I just want to jump in and point to you one thing going forward. Uh, in this last year, we've got the 9.9 megawatt Walston Switch property. We've got the, um, the Porter Mill 46-megawatt, um, project, the Kumquat sits around 7.2-megawatt. So, these are all solar sighting projects that are, um, you know, are challenging. In Wacomico County alone, we're about to lose 500, nearly 500 acres in one year of agricultural land. And that's all due to, uh, renewable energy development. And God bless them, you know, we need to get as much renewable energy adopted as quickly as humanly possible. Um, but, um, and I, and I totally support anyone, uh, any, uh, any landowner to do what they want to do with their land, but, uh, at the same time, this is really hurting our agricultural future. Since 2017, Maryland, we've lost 12,000 acres of farmland just since, in just in, in, in a five-year timeframe. So, um, and I want to specifically point out one member who's here, Delegate Chris Adams. Uh, I appreciate just listening, I just happen to be listening in to one, uh, bill hearing where you specifically brought this up of the issue of solar sighting and how much if we don't plan for it, we're going to lose our agricultural future. So, um, I, I guess I'll put that out to you all as a question, is how do we go forward to make sure that we're, uh, and by the way, that 12,000 acres we lost, that's just farmland. We're not even talking about, uh, land that we're going to plant 5 million trees or restore the bay or, uh, you know, or, or forest land or others. So, um, we need to make sure that we're balancing that and, and being thoughtful, just as we're thoughtful about development and where that goes, and hopefully we need to do so with that.
Could I respond to that as well? My Chair, um, Chair Brian Feldman, Senate Education, Energy, and Environment. Uh, we did have a bill to address that, um, I think recognizing we don't want all of our valuable farmland going for solar at the same time, how to, uh, see how we can use this alternative energy. And the bill focused more on kind of the rooftops and other, um, uh, options that I think are, would be more supported by our community. Um, I'd like to follow up with you because, um, it sounds like what was passed in this bill could possibly help the Wacomico County situation now. So, if we could follow up with you on that?
Yeah. Delegate Adams?
I'm just going to add, um, because there are two actionable items for the, for the county, because I'm very concerned and I'm not sure that there's going to be support from the legislature, that the bill that you were talking about gets rid of the, uh, the, the plan or the action that has to happen, the comprehensive plan where these decisions are made. They want to take the zoning and the control away from the counties and put it to the states. That bill, uh, would be devastating. And really, at the end of the day, Mako stood in polite opposition to the bill. Obviously, Mako represents all counties, not just the rural counties, but the CPCN process, that one that was related to that bill is, is damaging because that process grants local input, local authority and local control, frankly. And we have to make sure we assert, it didn't completely remove it, though. And that's where you need Mako to stand up this year during the interim and, and next year. Paul Pinsky, ME, the Maryland Energy Administration literally said we are 32,000 acres short of, of solar throughout the state. And where do you think they're going to go? They're going to go where there's a little line, flatland, agriculture land. If we do it, we keep messing around, we're going to lose poultry. That's all there is to it. And if that goes, uh, that is the foundation for which everything, um, for our state on the eastern shore depends. And you, you're right to alert yourself in this county, but it's a state issue that we need to stand up on and win. We need to win that fight.
Thank you. Vice President, uh, Mayor, one, one comment and then we'll wrap. Thank you.
Question for anybody. Uh, thank you all for the long hours and dedication up there. I, I said it the other day in a presentation, that an elected official is not a nine-to-five job, and, and you guys have proven that. Um, all the bills that we navigated and not, did not pass, are we likely to see them again, like House Bill 1515, like the tax on services? Is that likely to come back?
I would say yes. Um, unfortunately, yes. Um, it's not one that I'm in favor of, um, simply because that bill would, uh, as proposed this year, would incre- excuse me, decrease the sales tax, but then, uh, put taxes on services, services such as our power washing, uh, funeral services, barber shops, beauty shops, grass cutting.
Barber shop?
Yes.
Really?
So, um, those, those to me are, uh, very, uh, much concerning because what that, what that translates to is that, um, all Marylanders would be heavily impacted because if we looked at the sales tax, um, increasing, then that would spread out the, um, effort for people who are visiting the state of Maryland and not just all of us who need to get our homes power washed. And all of those ancillary things are important, specifically, uh, for me, the funeral services was very, um, difficult to see, you know, that to be, um, a tax, given the fact that that's something that, you know, all of us are going to see at some point. But nonetheless, I do foresee it coming back. Um, it was, it was, um, very much concerning as to whether or not, um, you know, all of those fees that were mentioned were passed. Um, but it, it's very concerning to me where we're going to go as a state, um, financially, uh, as we look at the, uh, blueprint. I mean, the all, reality is, all of our counties are struggling, and the reality is, we may need to pull back. And that's just not Cherie saying this. This is, this is, uh, persons who are in the education field who wants the best for students and for teachers, but the reality of it is, we financially can't keep up.
We do appreciate you all being here very much. I enjoyed working with you over the last year, and I know we're going to continue to see you as each and every week goes by.
And President, if I could, just one last thing. I have a public service announcement. As you know, I always have, uh, district meetings in the district. Um, coming up for Wacomico County is on Thursday, April the 25th. I'm going to have the, um, Maryland Department of Aging come forward and speak at the San Domingo School Community and Cultural Center. That'll be from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. So if you're in that area on the 25th, feel free, because what I'm finding is that our aging community has a lot of questions. And finally, this year, we were able to get some movement in helping people with hearing aids. Hearing aids are extremely expensive. And so when we as a state can help in that capacity, I feel it's important for people to know that. And then the last meeting that I'll have in Wycomico County is on Tuesday, April the 30th. And that's going to be at St. James AMI Zion. The subject there is the Maryland Department of Veterans Affairs. So that would be the Secretary of that Agency coming down, talking about all the veteran policies that we pass and programming as well. Maryland Higher Education Commission for people needing, we're having snacks? Yes, if you're providing, we'll have lots of snacks.
Let me hold you for one second. Joe wants to make a comment, so does Shane, and then we'll wrap. Thanks.
Sure. Well, thank you.
Delegate Anderton, you made the comment about the liquor bill. The dispensary bill, not the distillery bill. You said it's over and done with. Is it done with?
Yeah.
Won't be back next year?
What?
The dispensary bill.
No, it's passed. It's going to the governor's.
I'm talking about, are you going to bring it back for the next session?
Why would I have to if it's passed?
Well, it didn't pass like they wanted it to pass.
That'd be up to us.
But that's up to y'all.
Pardon me?
That's up to y'all. Do you want a bill next year?
No, I'm not asking for a bill. Just asking, are you going to bring it back?
You answered your own question, brother.
Yeah, we'll bring it back, Joe.
It's up to you.
Now, the other, other thing I had, you made a comment, I guess I was daydreaming or not paying attention. Can you explain to me what you meant about District 5 and myself?
What? Oh, I wasn't, I was saying the council member from District 5, not District 5 itself. Oh, I was talking about, and being facetious in a way, but I hope you would appreciate it. Someone like me appreciates it. And a lot of times I say things just to entertain myself, and if you're entertained, it's a bonus. You know, I was talking about the Purdue Stadium. The museum hasn't been touched since 1996. And I was saying, a lot of us have, have changed things since 1996. And then I was just cracking a joke, you know.
He's saying you're looking good for your age, Joe.
I thought it was great, personally.
I didn't understand.
Personally, I'm going to use that again because I liked it so much.
Shane? You know? Councilman Baker?
I'll be quick.
I wasn't done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The other thing, this $500, $800 fee on purchasing cars, I know that goes to the dealer, correct?
So the answer is we authorized it from 500 to 800, but that, that's money that doesn't go to the state. How that helps is with the excise tax. It improves the excise tax scenario.
You know, the problem with that is, and I had this from a personal experience, they try to tell you that that's required. I know. And the dealer I was dealing with, I brought it out. I said, no, it's not. Oh, yeah, it's the law. No, it's not. And I think there should be some kind, I don't know what you do to inform the consumer. But when you have a dealer sitting there, and of course, you know, thank goodness I picked up on that, you know. But when you have a consumer sitting there, that's, you know, that's a pretty traumatic experience buying a vehicle. I mean, you kind of get run through the wringer when you get into a dealership and then somebody throws.
You want some type of disclosure?
Yeah, it needs to be. I think there's some little fine print on the bottom.
There is some fine print.
Yeah, but it's real fine.
Yeah, you have to look for it, yeah.
So my committee has dealer, manufacturer, all those bills, and that's a bill. That could be a local bill. I mean, but the point is that that 500, 800 had to happen by law because of how the state regulates that relationship.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
Delegate Adams, you mentioned it took 500 million to balance the budget this year out of the rainy day fund.
So we're required constitutionally to pass a balanced budget. The rainy day fund was how they did it, basically. There were some funding formula changes and maybe transferring dollars that were, you know, sort of like sitting idle for the moment. But the, the $500 million balanced the budget. The Burfa, which is the second bill that I strongly opposed first time and then after the negotiation occurred, is where some of the worst budgeting acts occur. That subject frankly is why I said I may not vote for the budget next year because they still have to pass a balanced budget.
So, so the question is, what I was going to ask, how much money last year was taken out of the rainy day fund to balance the budget?
I don't think there was any money.
So that much of an increase?
That, well, and so, you know, the comptroller does, she's the board of revenue estimates. And every quarter, we've had our revenues downgraded, including this past March. And, and yes, to balance the budget with a revenue shortfall, that's how they, they went about it. And again, 500 million this year, in a couple of years, it's $3 billion. And that's not going to happen, we don't, we don't have enough cash sitting around to fund a $3 billion deficit. It will be, to Cherie's point, it's going to be massive tax increases. I mean, it's just, or, or as a Republican and maybe a governor who's thinking logically about this, how about cutting some spending for crying out loud? I'm sorry, did I say something politically incapable?
Or extending deadlines.
Well, I'm, I'm saying politically that there, the governor, I think the legislature is trying to help the governor by passing the buck and moving this thing down past the next election cycle. It's not going to work. Most citizens are going to realize that our spending and our income do not match. They didn't match this year, it gets worse every year after that. And budget play isn't going to cut it for most in the legislature next year.
The issue is Kerwin, is the issue.
That's right.
It's a $4 billion price tag. It's not the state spending as is. It's the state spending plus Kerwin that throws us over.
Which where the public Kerwin represents investments in education.
Right, right. And so what that is, is another program that's laid on top of another program that's laid on top of another program. And instead of taking away the Thornton program and all the other ones underneath and then reestablishing, you know, this, this Kerwin funding formula for education, they've just laid it on top of other things. And that's, that's part of the issue is that we're, we have to create $4 billion by the end of the decade annually here, here in perpetuity. Now, the goal is here with extending that out. If you do it the right way and you kind of stretch it out a little more, then you can allow your, your economy to grow organically, to absorb that increase organically with job growth as new technologies come on board and these data centers looking to pop up everywhere, which pay a tremendous amount of taxes, but use a tremendous amount of electricity. So it's a bit of a double-edged sword there. But so there are ways you could do it organically if you choose. The problem is, is that folks want to get it done now and that's where it becomes a real issue. And so you're going to have to either curtail spending to absorb that $4 billion annual hit or you're going to have to increase revenues. I do not support increasing revenues. I have enough hands in my pockets. I don't need any more. And, you know, I think what I do at home is if I have an issue, I cut spending to adjust. I think that the state should do the same as best we can and, and kind of stretch things out and let things grow organically as they have been. As for the rainy day fund, a lot of that was leftover money from COVID that had to be utilized and so that was utilized. The rainy day fund is in a very stable situation. It has to be. So we, there's certain percentage we cannot go under. So, you know, it has to be. So a lot of that issue came from, again, the bill for the Key Bridge kind of really put a lot of pressure on that as well. The write downs happened because a lot of times that numbers are projected, we kind of overshoot expectations, you know. And so they have to kind of readjust back to where we actually were. You know, it's kind of like over guessing your budget every year and then your actual money comes in. It's not that you didn't really lose money, you just kind of have to readjust, you know. It's like you, you know, you're asking for $100, you know, knowing you're going to get $75.
I'll get into back and forth.
That's all right.
I know we're busy, but it's very, it's very concerning.
It's concerning everybody. Absolutely.
From zero to 500.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah.
Out of a savings account to balance a budget.
They're called unfunded mandates. And what will happen with Kerwin is it'll come to you and the county to pay through property taxes.
That is true.
And the assessments that I'm getting and you're getting, they're showing up 30, 50, 100% higher than what they were. That takes a three-year to implement it. What they're doing is they're queuing up the county to have to take over the responsibility of the state's obligations under law. And that's scary. Be aware of that.
But where you can take some positive actions so we're not panicked and where you all have played a strong role with Mako as an. When Mako does identify a priority issue, such as whether it's extending out the timelines for the blueprint that gives the locals more flexibility and makes it more affordable, identifying some of this early on and having it be a Mako priority, it goes to the heart of your question, which is really the structural deficits that we have not addressed because at this point, the blueprint is not paid for. So, which means that's why you have a structural deficit. But I try to always, like, as we leave here, what is our action item for this interim? Is to face the reality of those budget challenges and see if Wycomico County, maybe working with Mako, can make some, you know, even stronger recommendations on how to not only maybe stretch out the mandates for the blueprint, but there's also mandates for the, for climate change plans. I believe that's like $90 million as well. So there, again, you can say, you can say we're still going to accomplish our goals, but we might need to extend them out so it's affordable at the local level.
Fine, everybody, this is not a conversation in a vacuum. The major counties on the western shore, they're talking about the exact same thing.
They are.
And so the idea of going to Mako, you know, it may sound a little remote, but just know every, every county body right now is having the same discussion.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate you being here and thanks for your time.
Thank you.
We wish it to be long.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Hurley?
Next on the agenda is the submission of the fiscal year 25 operating in capital budget by our county executive Julie Giardano and our Director of Finance Pam Olin.
They're in the hallway.
Okay, thanks.
Give me the personnel. Oh.
I've seen.
I'd be surprised.
You're right. It's flipped online on the sheet here.
Sorry, you'll probably have to dress that up there. Ms. Hurley?
Okay, before you have our county executive Julie Giardano and our Director of Finance Pam Olin and our county attorney, Mr. Wilbur, and they are here to submit the fiscal year 25 operating in capital budget.
Ms. Hurley? Good morning.
Good morning. So I'm just going to give you a couple of highlights. The budget is just under $199 million, which is about a 2.7% increase over last year's original budget. Just so to put that into reference, the CPIU for March 2024 was 3.8, so our growth is less than CPIU. This budget does go above the revenue cap to fund new debt service related to the replacement of Fruitland Primary as well as to fund the increase in maintenance of effort. We're going above maintenance of, or going above revenue cap by just under two cents. We're proposing a tax rate of 87.39 per hundred dollars of assessed value. This is still a decrease in our overall tax rate by just over a cent. The Maryland Code, Section 5104D1 and D2 allows for the revenue cap to be exceeded for educational purposes. In addition to, we are funding $11.45 million worth of Pago capital funding as well as $20 million of debt for the continuation of the Fruitland Primary project. We are under our principal and interest policy. We're at 7.54% versus 12%, which is allowed by our policy. This budget does include a commitment to our employees of a 5% increase. We're doing a 4% COLA plus 1% for raise so that they move on the scale, not just moving the scale up. In addition, we've created a new scale for our correctional officers. And the new scale would become effective in July and then they would take a step on that scale in January. We're in the process of negotiating with the FOP for a new agreement, which includes raises as well for them. And emergency services dispatchers, we're looking at an 8% raise for them. As stated previously, we're looking at $20 million of borrowing and $500,000 in Pago for Fruitland Primary and increasing our operational funding to the Wycomico County Public Library at 13%. We request council, read this, digest it, send any questions that you have to us. We will gladly participate in any work sessions that council has and the budget is submitted by the charter deadline.
Part of a question, why would the executive increase the property taxes on the public when the council recommended and amended it to actually take those funds from reserves?
So my suggestion would be to read everything and then if we want to have a work session on that, then that's fine.
Do that. But, I mean, am I hearing you correctly that the recommendation is to increase property taxes?
Property tax rate is going down, but it is going above revenue cap number. So the number would have gone down further.
I understand.
But it is not going up. It's still, we're lowering the tax rate.
Well, you're lowering the taxes because the assessable base has increased.
Okay.
But you are not, you're not lowering the taxes for the citizens of Wycomico County as much as you can because it appears you're going to be using that tax fund, those tax funds for a project which the council has suggested needs to come out of reserves.
Okay, so. The executive does not agree and what happened three weeks ago is not supported by state law.
I think it was in the best interest of the citizens of Wycomico County regardless of your interpretation.
Well, it's, Fruitland Primary is funded in this budget.
Yeah, I understand. Any other questions from anybody initially? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next is a submission of a reappointment to the Wycomico County Personnel Board.
Mr. Lufman, how are you?
Hi, good morning. Doing well. So a couple of meetings ago, you, we pointed and you confirmed Matt Kramer to the Personnel Board. Today, we have a reappointment for Debbie Moore. Again, this board meets as needed when there's sort of a formal grievance kind of thing. And I asked AK to pull this because we haven't had a Personnel Board since I started in December of 2022. Yes. So the last meeting was actually March 2021. So they really meet infrequently, even more infrequently than I thought. So I thought I would give that kind of context.
Kate? Resolution number 41-2024 is confirming the reappointment of Debbie Moore to the Wycomico County Personnel Board.
Entertained motion from council to approve resolution 41-2024. To move second. Any discussion? Any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks for your consideration. It's resolution number 42-2024. This is amending the fiscal year 2024 Budget Position Control Document Exhibit F to amend the position and title of Accountant M35 to Principal Accountant M37 and Senior Revenue Assistant M34 to Revenue Assistant M33. And we have our Director of Finance here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained motion from council to approve resolution 42-2024. To move second. Do we have any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
You're welcome.
Mr. Benson?
Introducing Bill Number 202402, which is the annual budget for the operation of the Wacomico County in Maryland to adopt the cap of government consisting of the operating capital budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. Governmental Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. An anticipated grant funding budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. FY25 position changes budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. FY Pay and Classification Plan for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. FY Proposed Capital Budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025.
Ms. Benson, if you can pull your microphone down for me. Thank you.
And to appropriate fundings for all expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024 and ending June 30th, 2025 is hereafter indicated. Again, this is here to be introduced today.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. Entertained motion from council to introduce, this is an approval of the legislative bill. This is just the introduction of the legislative bill number 2024-02. Need a motion. To move second. Discussion. All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill number 2024-02, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried, the introduction of legislative bill 2024-02 passes unanimously. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence and your concern. We appreciate you staying here so long. We'd like to ask you to try to keep it within the three-minute time limit since we are running long. Thank you.
Good morning, Craig Stoffco. Here to talk about the Park Jeep racetrack debate, be very brief. I went to the Salisbury City Council meeting last night. We discussed this. There seemed to be an emphasis.
Could you get closer to your mic in that way so we can, we want everybody to hear you.
There seemed to be, is that good?
Yes.
Seemed to be an emphasis on the issue of common sense. So sticking with that theme, I heard some of it again mentioned today. I would like to just reiterate really two or three things that fall under common sense to revisit a county named after the river. The Wycomico River, it's on the seal, so filthy, the highest level of contamination ever recorded. People can't swim in it. That should make everyone in this county cry. Secondly, again, to reiterate, Wycomico County is the only county in the state of Maryland without a state park. Personally, I have walked this property almost every day for 19 years. I'm being told now through proxy that I'm not allowed to, to go back there and walk the paths, even though there's nothing back there. It really underscored to me the lack of availability of resources like that. Finally, the health count, the county health rankings came out recently. Makes a lot of people cringe. Makes a lot of people cringe. When I ran the health department, I used to look forward to those, because Somerset, along with Dorchester and Wacomiko, were always ranked at the bottom, and that made grants easy to write. The funding jumped off, because we're required to do these needs assessments. The numbers come back, and the money comes in, and it's, it's easy money from the state. In Somerset, I got literally millions of dollars that went right to the county for county projects. The latest report out of 23 counties, Wacomiko County came in 21st, so only two, two counties are, are less healthy. The rate of diabetes is three times higher in this county than the state. Heart disease, three times greater, cancer, two and a half times greater. And when you look at what the CDC proposes, what public health officials propose, what medical doctors propose to address these health issues, walking, especially for old guys like me, some of the young guys can go to the gym and lift your weights and run and all this stuff. Us old folks, we got to walk, and we need somewhere to do it. And to be able to address such blatant needs that are in black and white and put out for everyone to see, these things have to be addressed, or, or people die. You know, mortality and mortality rate in, in this county are much higher than the national and state average. When it comes between a Jeep track and a public park where, where people can address these issues, I really struggle to, to comprehend the thinking that goes into that. I'm done. I would like to ask a question. Would it be okay if I passed out? I just want you to read one page. It's not a gift, it's an assignment.
Give it to Mrs. Hurley, and she'll pass it out to the council member. Sure.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Right at the end of the table.
Okay. And finally, it's, read page 184 of my book. It's about Wacomiko, the Indians, a sequel comes out at Christmas.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Carol Donahue from Whitehaven in Wacomiko County. I'm here today on behalf of the Wacomiko Environmental Trust and the Friends of the Nanticoke River. And we have brought for members of the council the, the brand-new Wacomiko River Atlas, published by WET just recently, that provides the very first overview of the, of the river. We want, we'll be sending members of the council and the county executive a letter today summarizing the concerns that our two organizations share on the ecological issues that this park proposal, the change in the park proposal raises. We do share the, the view that the, the property has particular ecological value. It contains the headwaters of the Wacomiko River. So preventing its degradation, degradation is important to protect the water quality of the river. The southern portion of the Connolly Mill property lies over the Paleo Channel, so its protection also safeguards the quality of our drinking water and groundwater that supports local agriculture and other business. The property includes non-tidal wetlands, provides significant forest resources for migratory birds. We echo the concerns of the last speaker about the importance of providing additional natural recreation opportunities for county residents. It has a 22-acre lake that would be ideal for low-impact boating, a lot of existing trails. We, we really need more of that. We realize the situation is, is not of the council's making, but we urge you to, to, to identify and take steps to try to preclude the conversion of this property from a park for all residents to a commercial off-road motor vehicle site. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue.
Is it still morning? Yes, I got five minutes. Good morning. My name is Michelle Wright, I live in Hebron. I would like to first speak about the $4 million request for the maintenance of effort for the Board of Education. These funds would support school climate, blueprint requirements, technology, and inflation costs related to health insurance, projected life and retirement increases, utilities, and a few other support, student support services. I think we all agree that this is a lot of money, along with the ongoing requests for school construction and renovation projects. I would like to ask our county executive and county council to break this $4 million down and talk to Dr. Stauffer and his staff on possible ways to maybe fund part of it, if not all of it. I've been working together to get great results. I don't believe in an all-or-nothing scenario. Just keep in mind, the Board of Education has no choice but to absorb the inflation costs for insurance and the blueprint mandate, therefore, other student services will be affected. Currently, Wacomiko's cost per pupil is $3,514. Worcester County is over $15,000 per student. Somerset is close to $4,000, and Dorchester is close to $6,000. We are next to last for cost per pupil, with Caroline being the lowest. I've heard Caroline may increase their cost per pupil cost, which will make Wacomiko the lowest in the state. So I want to take a minute to just think about that. We would be the lowest in the state. We are currently the second lowest, and it's truly concerning, and it would be embarrassing if we were the lowest. I watched a meeting held March 19th, with Fruitland Primary being discussed. The vote was six to one to keep the school construction project on schedule, and then the discussion took place about the funding source to keep the project moving forward. There was an amendment passed four to three. These types of decisions require hard questions and hard conversations. I appreciate and respect those that truly tried to make a decision that would financially work for our county and its citizens. I understand the pressure that comes with sitting in a position to impact so many. As I continued to watch, I was taken back by some of the comments, and I'd like to respond and maybe give the public some insight, because I did serve on the Board of Education for six years, and I've been in other roles, so I think I have a little bit of experience and knowledge to say these kind of comments. The first comment was the school plan had never been shared. These projects take 10, up to 10 years to, from start to finish. Council members have every opportunity to ask for a copy of the plans if you've not received them. And I can bet probably every dollar that I've got that Dr. Stauffer and his staff would provide that information if asked. I do also know that there are many work sessions that take place with you, and there are quarterly meetings that take place, because there's every opportunity to get a copy of the plans if you haven't seen them. School building commission was brought up, and I served on that committee as well. This is a county council-appointed committee. It was stated that there's no expertise in construction on this committee. And I sat shaking my head, thinking, I cannot leave him hearing these words. So I tried to find out who's on the committee. So we have, and I hope I don't mess up the name, Amanda Pollak. She's serving as chair, and she is a former Salisbury City planner and current Water Resource Engineer with the Center for Watershed Protection. James Thomas Jr., Vice Chairman, past President and CEO of George Miles &amp; Burr Engineering and Architecture. He is well-recognized, and he is a longtime civil engineer. Sarah Guy, she's a Principal for SG Insights. She has an MBA and a PhD of organizational leadership. Bruce Patterson, former Executive Director of Facilities and Property at Peninsula Regional Medical Center, and he served on the school budget commission when I was on there. And that's when PRMC was going through major, major additions and renovations there, so he is certainly fully qualified. Keith Fisher, Principal at Fisher Architector LLC, and he's an architect. We do have representation from Bunky Lufman from the county executive office. Mr. Cannon serves on there to represent the county council. John Palmer serves on there to represent the Board of Education, and you have Brian Rager, who is representing the superintendent on that committee. So I believe that these folks are truly qualified to serve as an advisory board. And if they are appointed by the county council, I would think that you would appoint people that you think are qualified. Comment number three, schools are over the top. When Bennett High School was being done, it was referred to as the Taj Mahal. Our schools need to be state-of-the-art, safe, energy-efficient, captivating, functional, impressive, innovative, modern, remarkable, spacious, unique, and well-built. Schools, this is the other comment, schools aren't maintained once the Board of Education gets approval for a new school project. Decisions have to be made about what needs to be maintained and how much money to spend. If you're waiting for your tax refund, and you need to put, and you're planning on getting a new car, you may put one tire on that car until you get your refund, so you can go get your new car. You may have something wrong with your HVA system, so you have HVA technician come, you have them put a temporary part on that, so you get your tax refund, so that you can go and replace the entire unit. We do that in our personal lives, and the Board of Education does the same thing with our buildings. It's the same thing, just on a much larger scale. During the last few weeks, I've driven by Cambridge North Dorchester, Cambridge South Dorchester, Demer, Middle, and High. These schools are beautiful from the outside, and I'm sure they're just as nice on the inside. These counties have invested in their students. Last week, I attended a baseball game at Moredella Middle and High. When I pulled up, the parking lot was full, because they had a track meet, a baseball game, and a softball game. As I walked up there, and I was thinking about when my children were there, and I was looking at what's going on there today, and I was so excited for what's going on there. All those discussions started back in, prior to 2006, when I got on the school board. It's 2024, and they're not done. But it, I mean, my heart was just full when I was looking at all the students running on a real track, not dirt with weeds in it. The soccer field, the baseball field, the softball fields, they're all something that we can be proud of, and all the school boards were working. I share this because we're responsible to make this a reality for all students in Wacomiko County. I'd like to thank those that visited Fruitland Primary to see firsthand the conditions of that school. I would ask that you continue to visit the schools. I'm sure Dr. Stauffer would welcome you anytime that you would like to visit. I've said this many times, and I will continue to ask that the county executive's office, the county council, work with the Board of Education. Be proactive, plan for the future, instead of being in a reactionary position every year. If you need a gap year, talk to the school system, talk to Dr. Stauffer. Have a plan, make a plan, work together. We put trust in you to have the foresight, the vision, and the power to get projects done, whether that's for education, public health, roads, emergency services, and other government projects. Please remind yourself why you decided to serve in this capacity. I believe it was to make Wacomiko a place to be proud of, and a place where we want to stay and raise our families. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Good morning, afternoon, council members. Holly Ortell, President of the Wacomiko County Fire Association. So I just wanted, I just spoke with Senator Caroza, and I wanted to just put it on record for right now, a bill that was unanimously passed. How, I don't know. It's called the Public Safety Wellness Checks Requirement, Gabrielle's Law. It's waiting now for the governor to sign. I need to find out a little bit more information, actually, Senator Caroza's really gonna help me with that. So the synopsis is, it's HB 404, requiring a law enforcement agency or fire, rescue, or emergency medical services entity that receives a certain request for a wellness check of an individual to connect, to conduct a wellness check, or submit a request for the relevant law enforcement agency or fire, rescue, or emergency medical services entity to conduct a wellness check without unreasonable delay. So then it was cross-fired with SB 0190. Basically, what it's saying is requiring a law enforcement agency that receives a certain request for a wellness check of an individual, to conduct a wellness check, wellness check of the individual with a reasonable amount of time after receiving the request under certain circumstances, but it's also stating to use fire EMS. It's so dangerous. They passed that in, I believe it was Texas, and the first week, the medic people knocked on the door, and as soon as they opened it, they shot and killed one of the people. So I'm going to be in touch with Senator Caroza, and, you know, if need be, I'm going to ask the council, also with the executive's office, to write a bill to oppose this. It's not our job, we're not, we don't wear bulletproof vests. We don't know what, you know, if we walk into a crime scene, we don't know how to preserve it for law enforcement when they get there, and it's just, you know, putting a bad taste in everyone's mouth. And we don't know how it passed, because the MSFA, along with the Fire, the Professional Firefighters Union in the state of Maryland, we were all against it, unless it was amended for only the police. With that being said, I want to also, Dr. Stauffer and I are very excited about a program that he, myself, Brian Ashby, Chief Frampton from Salisbury, we're getting back. It starts in the fall of 2024, bringing back to CTE, VOTAC, firefighter one, and EMT for 11th and 12th graders. They have to be affiliated with a fire company in Wacomiko County, so that has to happen. Or Wacomico, or Salisbury, Salisbury is going to bring the cadet program back. They're only able to take five people, but there's companies all around Wacomiko County, and we are excited to have kids, cadets can join, I believe at 13 years old. This is, so the CTE program is only good for the 11th and 12th graders, and once you're 18, you know, you graduate from this, kids can get a really decent paying career job, you know, making 20-some dollars an hour, getting on a medic unit. You know, go to, you know, Salisbury, apply for position as a firefighter up there, Ocean City, whatever. So this is really exciting, and hopefully, you know, if you all know any kids, tell them to call us. We'd love to have them, they are our future.
Thank you, Ms. Ortell.
So that's it. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is James Saline, and I live on Shadow Lane in Delmar, Maryland. I'm here to voice my opposition to the Safari at the Quarry events that are planned here at the county-owned Connolly Mill property. I want to share two brief topics. First, when browsing Google Maps on my phone, an event venue popped up named Safari at the Quarry at the Connolly Mill Park location. When digging a little deeper, it appears possible that Safari at the Quarry and/or LiveWire LLC has claimed business ownership of this location, insofar as it is managed by someone using a Gmail email address that starts with SA, suggesting that is an acronym for Safari. However, the full email address associated with this geo-referenced event does not appear. Thus, I asked the county council to make an inquiry into this, because if the event was posted by any entity under than, other than Wacomiko County, the claim of ownership may be both unauthorized and a misrepresentation. Lastly, please be aware that insofar as the Connolly Mill, actually, I had written something else I would like to read instead of that. This Connolly Mill property is zoned residential in the city of Salisbury, and these Safari at the Quarry includes private events. They're not public events. They serve no public purpose. Safari at the Quarry events and contract should be immediately terminated. Safari at the Quarry events and contracts should be immediately terminated. Restore the plans for Connolly Mill Park. Thank you. And I have a petition here that we've all started and let it hand out some of the current results, just so you guys get an understanding of who's supporting this.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mikel Dahlien, and I live on Shadow Lane in Delmar, Maryland. The county executive stated in a news interview with WMDT on April 9th that she will not cancel the Safari at the Quarry events because "we are not in the business of going back on our word." She does not want to break her promise to a businessman from another county, but she is willing to break her promise to her constituents. In the capital improvement plan that Julie Giordano submitted on December 17th, 2022, Connolly Mill Park development is listed as an existing project with an allocation of $100,000 from Pago. The description of the line item is as follows. Proposed funding in fiscal year '27 would be utilized to develop a park master plan that would include multiple opportunities for public input and engagement regarding future plans for the property. This promise was made many times before Ms. Giordano took office, having been included in every CIP since the donation of the property in 2019, but she made it again herself on this date and put her name to it. Instead of keeping this promise, zero opportunities for public input engagement were given when she made the unilateral decision to sign the MOU for Safari at the Quarry. Zero opportunities for public input or engagement were offered when she removed the long-held Connolly Mill Park development from the CIP this year. Neither did she seek the counsel or advice of the NRCAC, who has been intimately involved with developing a responsible low-impact use plan for the proposed park. In the same April 9th interview, Ms. Giordano stated that "the closest place that has anything like this is three and four hours away." This is simply not true. Jeep Jam in Pittsville describes himself as Eastern Shores Off-Road Jeep Park and has events scheduled for May and August. They offer trails and obstacle courses, vendors, and onsite camping, and are 11 miles from Safari at the Quarry, 20 minutes away. On the other hand, the Connolly Mill property offers a public park opportunity that is unique and irreplaceable for our county. The environmentally valuable Connolly Mill Park is part of a seven-mile continuous greenway extending from Sussex County to the Wycomico River. It has the highest elevations in all of Wycomico County. The Tri-County Council highlighted the benefits of combining the natural environment of Connolly Mill Park with the ballfields at the adjacent Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex. If we follow this plan, an extraordinary opportunity to serve the diverse recreational needs of all county residents will be born, thus providing the greatest benefit to the greatest number of people. We will also be protecting our most valuable natural resources at the same time. This is a win-win for everyone. We are not in opposition of Jeep events, we are in opposition of holding these events in locations that breaks the promise of nearly a decade worth of work to protect the environment and make this space available to all residents as a public park. In an interview with WMDT on April 4th, the county executive stated, "We actually, as an administration, 100% agree that we would like to move forward in the direction into bringing it back onto the table of becoming a park." President John Cannon stated that "it can be reestablished" of the Tri-County Council's Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy with a stroke of a pen. I ask for Ms. Giordano to keep her word and restore Connolly Mill Park to the CIP. I ask her to move forward with providing this vital park to our region. I ask the council to please take action to do the same. Please keep the promise to Wycomico County. Please save Connolly Mill Park.
Good morning. Felicity Taylor. I reside in Wycomico County. I'm an accounting professional and a CPA, but above all, I'm a mother of two young children, 11 and 9 years old, who also enjoy outdoor activities, such as hiking, biking, running, kayaking, fishing, just to name a few. We live in a neighborhood near the Connolly Mill Park, and we were very excited to learn that in 2019, council agreed to take the property as a donation. It was advertised by Wycomico Recreation Parks and Tourism Department as a low-impact area for hiking, biking, and possibly kayaking. The property was envisioned as a park space after extensive public input. Local nonprofits, residents, and nearby neighborhoods actively participated in shaping the park's future alongside with Wycomico's Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee. The plan to develop the beautiful land into a public-use park has been derailed by the county executive Giordano. In September 2023, it has been taken from public purpose and was signed over to Brad Hoffman with LiveWire Media LLC to be used for off-roading adventures, also known as Safari at the Quarry, and to be developed into the ultimate off-road park, as it is currently advertised on the event's website. Additionally, after the executive signed the MOU with LiveWire Media LLC, the park was officially removed from the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy plans for submission for funding. Removal request was initiated shortly after the MOU was signed. Just to note that Mrs. Giordano sits on the committee. Outwardly observing this process, it appears that the county executive Giordano has not been acting in the best interest of all residents of Wycomico County. Instead, she is acting in the best interest of a select few who will profit from the use of public land and who she has known a really long time. These are her own words from December 5th open work session, page 4, paragraph 4. Well, we all have business and professional relationships, no questions. However, this transaction wouldn't be tainted with unfair advantage had a public hearing took place and/or other developers given the opportunity. Dear council members, I kindly request to help restore the future development of Connolly Mill Park into a public-use facility to benefit the entire community instead of select few. Thank you.
Bruce Robson, I live here in Wycomico County and have been involved with an initiative to address litter and trash dumping on our roads. And I know that the budget was just delivered this morning, and I just wanted to just sort of give you a brief update, et cetera. Sunday, this past Sunday, we've gone on every weekend since January 1st, with I think one exception. This past Sunday, we cleaned up Naylor Mill Road from Zion Road to Route 13 and about half of Brown Road. We picked up 600 pounds of litter and trash. The stretches we cleaned look good. There were 20 volunteers, 20, we've got up to 20, which included, among others, a realtor, two county councilmen, Wynne and Merrick, thank you very much, gentlemen, retirees, a medical professional, and two families. And included in the two families were four children, and this last one is the most important, because these kids, they're not gonna be throwing litter out their windows. You know, they're learning, they know that that's it. Besides our group, we've come aware of six other groups or individuals who pick up litter in Wycomico County on a regular basis. I'm sure there are more. The county and city have been supportive. County Executive Giordano and Mayor Taylor have both stepped up and provided a point person to communicate and strategize with. Specifically, on the part of the county, Mr. Swaby, who was here earlier, and particularly Mrs. Albarro, have been extremely helpful. Salisbury area Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Salisbury Committee are supporting our efforts. They paid for these signs. Where are we? Excuse me. In short, we're building momentum. We are building momentum. We need to help keep this going. Wouldn't it be wonderful to tout Wycomico County as clean? Wouldn't realtors and business recruiters and the tourism industry and the civic center and the county council and the executive's office and all of the cities of the county be enthusiastically bragging about that high-visibility benefit to our wonderful home? We need to keep the momentum going. Let's have more organization. We look to government to help us with that. Let's have a Wycomico Clean campaign with all that entails. Let's get more kids growing up with the mindset they won't throw their trash out the window. We're renewing our request to include this initiative in the '24-'25 budget. We need you to step up and help us keep the momentum going. Now, I believe it actually is in the budget, based on something that was said to me this morning. If it is, thank you very much, and again, we just need to keep it going. It's gonna be a long-term thing. We're in it for the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robson.
I'm taking my sign with me.
Any other public comments?
Quick question, are we allowed to show you a video?
No, we have to keep it within three minutes, Ms. Campbell. Thank you. I mean, you can show us the video, but your total has to be three minutes, huh?
I have a lengthy video from Sunday, if anybody's interested in seeing it, from the dirt bikes riding around on the pits and up on the, up on the very large sand hills and getting stuck up there and out there for hours. Sunday, they were out there for hours, and I went over there and took a little video just so I could share, so you have a little bit of an idea what you're dealing with. You can see the giant excavators 10 feet away. One of the gentlemen gets off of his bike and goes over to, I wasn't sure what he was doing, he was very closely inspecting what I think is the water pump over there that pumps from one lake to the other. As I zoomed in, I realized he was doing his business on the equipment and cleaning himself up to get back to his dirt bike, so there's a lot of access back there I don't think is really conducive. Were they drinking today? I don't know, but there's, there's plenty of activities, like going back there, that I think compromise the safety of that site. I know I've spoken about this before, but I'd like to speak about it again. I was at this Meet the Mayor meeting, Meet the Mayor meeting with the Salisbury City Mayor the other day, and I thought that was pretty productive, and I had a really good conversation with Police Chief Meinschain from Salisbury City Police. You know, actually, I listened first, I didn't even speak. At first, I listened to the citizens of the city talk about some of their concerns, and one of their concerns was a person who walks in the park all the time, and she asked the police chief why she doesn't see police presence in the park, and she thought that they should see police presence in the park, and I thought his response was kind of enlightening. He said that the police work on heat zones, and their heat zones are defined by call volume and where they need to be. So if you're in the park and you don't see the police, it's basically because it's safe or safer. And if you're someplace where you do see a lot of police, then you're in an area that's not that safe. So I thought that was a really good answer. I think it also supports, we've been questioned a few times on why we're complaining about security and safety, and we should be careful what we wish for, I think was an actual quote from the news from Ms. Giordano recently, that we should be careful what we wish for, which, I'm trying not to take that as a threat, but interpreting between the lines, if you, if you do develop a public park there, will you have security issues? You have security issues anywhere, but public parks in general aren't fenced in. You don't have to spend a million dollars to fence them, because they typically tend themselves, right? It's a publicly accessible piece of land where the police can come, where people can come, so they don't draw the criminals the way a site that's off the beaten path does. You know, Chief Meinschain was busy today. I asked if there was any way he could come, but he did have meetings. He did say he was reaching out to the sheriff's office because he was unaware of exactly what this property is, and, and the conflict between it being in the city and owned by the county is apparently not widely known. I spoke to Delegate Anderson again today, he did not understand that either. There's so much public misconception about what is going on with this. This is not an event. This is the production to become a full-time facility. It's all over, it's all over everything. So that is why we're speaking up, not just because we're annoyed about a weekend of noise. That's just not what the issue is, and the public should really get the truth about what the issue is. We are speaking for the citizens of the whole county about this park and about what's supposed to be going on back there. I think, I feel like I've been chastised a little bit for pointing to jurisdictional conflicts, and maybe that's not the right terminology, but when I spoke to the police chief, it seemed like it was, and he said he's been around, I think, 27 or more years, and he's never really seen something quite like this, where there is, where they're in the city, but the county's owned, and I think further conversations need to happen with regard to that. I did share the videos with him, and I think he wants to take a look at the site. I guess that conversation will go somewhere, but...
We could ask you to wrap?
I'm sorry?
If we could ask you to wrap?
Oh, wrap up, yeah, okay. I think there's a unique opportunity here for the executive to gracefully acknowledge that perhaps these events were planned before enough information about the history of the park, the park's progress, or perhaps a misunderstanding about the park being tabled when indeed it was not tabled, and only the transfer of project open space funding is really what was, I believe, declined by the council at the time, but that the park itself was not supposed to be taken away. If there's a misunderstanding about that, then I feel like there's an opportunity for her to course correct the situation and show the citizens at large that things can be righted when they have gone wrong. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell? Any other public comments? Yes, ma'am. You need to go to the podium? Thank you. We can't hear you back there. Thanks.
Hello, thank you. My name is Deepa Pilash. I'm a new resident of Shadow Lane in Connolly Mill Park. The one they were talking about, I am also representing all other people in the, in our neighborhood. As a new resident, when I came, one of the things we've been told by our realtors, there is a park coming here soon, sometime in the future, and we love the place because of it's so calm. That place is so lovely. Now, everything is disturbed, we can hear some of the mornings when we get up, it's this big loud voice, and we feel like it's some kind of trial going on there, and it's, it's disturbing, it's, I think, because the space is so open also, it's echoing in a way, our kids even are like, what is going on, you know? So please help our place, because it's a big thing, and I wish this was happening on a weekend, because more people will be here to represent us, our community. So we really appreciate all the help from all of you guys.
Any other public comments? Shane.
One thing I would like to see, not so much for my benefit, but for the public's benefit, you know, we've had a lot of public input lately, and this is the place to give that public feedback personally, and I would like to see the county executive in here when the public's talking about, you know, these, these problems in our community, so that they can have that face-to-face. I mean, that's something I'm sure the public would like. I know, I think it should be that way, but that's just my opinion. Yeah, that's it.
Shane?
I just want to say, I'm glad to see everybody here, and I'm sorry that you're here because of this issue, but we need that input. We need to hear your concerns. And I also agree with Shane that she's representing us as a county, and she should hear everything, the good, the bad, the ugly. She should hear everything, so, and face you all. That's a decision she made, and she has to live with it, so she has to hear the consequences of her decision. But I'm happy to see you, and I'm happy to be on this side of the table, because I think I can hear what's going on in the county, and not just in my, my district. All of, I went down for tipping the other day, just somebody said they're gonna be tipping, and I went way back somewhere I've never been before in my life. But anyway, it was a good learning experience. I didn't know all these woods were there, but I saw a lot of horse farms, so I did see that. But anyway, I'm happy to see you all, and I hear your concerns.
Well, thanks, everybody, for being here. Couple, last Saturday, we had the opportunity to do some of the council members. Unfortunately, we went to, the weather wasn't too nice. We went to the Plow Days, or fortunately, we went to the Plow Days, and the weather was cold and windy, and things got delayed, and some of the council members had to leave, but we still had a great turnout, there was a lot of people there, got to introduce some of the dignitaries and some of the people that's real important to our community. We were talking earlier today with the delegates, and the issue of solar panels came up, and I know Josh, there's a lot of people concerned with losing farmland to solar panels, but in my area, there's hundreds of acres that's not being farmed, it's farmland, that the government's paying landowners not to farm. So there's more reasons to worry about that than there is losing farmland to solar panels. I was talking to one farm, one landowner who owned this property, and I said, "How come you don't farm that?" "Well, the government pays me this much an acre," which was about twice of what he could rent it to, to another farmer to farm. So you can't blame them, I don't blame them for doing it, but we're... doing it. But we're, that's one reason that farmland's being lost. So, thank you. That's all I have. Oh, well, I do have one other thing. We heard today, or heard somebody say that there's no state parks in Wycomico County. So we have a prime piece of property out there that could possibly be a state park. I don't know whether the council wants to explore that with our delegation. I know that we do excavate part of that property for the landfill, but if we're going to turn that into a county park, we're going to have to stop the excavation anyway. And we hear complaints all the time about the county parks not being properly maintained. So I don't know whether our county really needs to take on another county park at the moment or not. But if we, the council, would talk to some of the delegation about possibly we could either donate that land or let the state take it over for a state park, I think would be a move in the right direction. So anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I also just want to thank everybody for being here. I do appreciate you all taking the time to come. I'm going to continue with the environmental theme. You know, Monday is Earth Day. This past week, we heard from the EPA what the safe drinking water level is. That's for PFAS chemicals. And that should be roughly, I think it is six parts per trillion. In Wycomico County, a couple of years ago, we had had a couple of wells in Salisbury tested. We were at 14 parts per trillion. Naylor Mill, next to Connelly Mill, came at 37. That's 600% of the recommended level of PFAS forever chemicals. So we really need citizens to engage, to do your own, to do testing. It was on, I think it was on the news last night, to really try to double down on, test your wells if you have it, to find out what's your level of PFAS if you can. And the state needs to jump in to help with that because it's costs. The other thing, you know, we heard, mentioned earlier, you know, the Wycomico River being terribly polluted can't, you know, swim in certain areas. You know, it's absolutely loaded right now with invasive species. You can see folks going at nighttime with spotlighting to try to kill snakeheads. In North America alone, we've lost 3 billion birds between now and 1970. There are 3 billion fewer birds that fly around outside, just in North America alone. The reason why we do CREP or other kind of programs, Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program, where we're paying farmers not to farm that land, is because we're trying to at least save one, the little bit of species that's left. The only thing that's alive these days for species are things that are cute or things we shoot, right? Things that look pretty like a panda bear, we're going to try to save that. You know, things we like to shoot, we're going to try and save that. But otherwise, we've got species die off at an incredible level. And lastly, I'll say to the, on the plastic side of this, you know, we have a huge effort here in the county to try to pick up trash. Well, you know, in less than 25 years, in 25 years now, by 2050, it is estimated there will be more trash, more plastic, which, by the way, when you create it, it hangs around, as you all know, for 2,000 years. There's going to be more plastic in the ocean than there are fish. So I think we all, I think it's really important, especially in a place like the Eastern Shore, in Wycomico County, where we really need to focus on the environment. And if we don't take care of that, then we're really in rough shape. So celebrate Earth Day. Thank you all.
I had something. I just got...
Were you so entrenched with that?
He said, what, what'd he say? If it's cute or something you shoot. I've never heard that before. That was a good one.
Quote me on that one.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I thought it was interesting about the vehicle disclaimer thing. I think that would be interesting, if that's something that we want to pursue for the...
Send a letter or something.
Yeah, send a letter or whatever. Yeah, I thought that was interesting. Oh, yeah. This weekend, we, a bunch, a couple of us in this room, and Jeff and I met up with Bruce and Mark, and we picked up a whole bunch of trash. And I think that's something that is momentum, and it's building, and we should continue to be a part of it. And I encourage anyone in this room, if you want to know more about it, Wycomico Clean Facebook, on Facebook, yeah, Wycomico Clean, you just look it up. And then that'll help everyone out. That's it.
I got something. First off, again, I want to thank everybody for coming out. It's important that we hear stuff at the podium, like Shane alluded to. As everybody knows, we've got the budget today. I think we're all looking forward to working through that process with the department heads and determining what the priorities are, so we can collectively provide the maximum services to the residents of our county, which is kind of why we are all here. There was some discussion about the Fruitland Primary School. If you haven't been following along, the capital improvement plan, I was going to say CIP, but I'm trying to refrain from using acronyms that the general public might not know what they mean. So the capital improvement plan that we got from the executive included $4 million for the Fruitland Primary School in FY '25, and nothing in the out years, which, you know, we had questions about that. And the capital improvement plan from the Board of Ed had 20.5 million in FY '25. So a little disparity there. So we agreed to restore the funding to the Board of Ed level so the school can start on time, which is important for a couple of reasons. One, we spent $1.4 million on construction documents that have a 24-month time limit to basically stick a shovel in the ground. If we don't do that, they expire, and they have to be redone, which basically means we've sent 1.4 million and wasted it. The other thing was cost escalations. If we did not start this school until FY ' '27, well, you can imagine how much 2x4s are going to be three years from now. And, you know, think about what they were three years ago and what they are now. So that's why we did that. So, and pulling the money out of the reserves that made sense, why borrow the money when we have the money?
Or raise taxes.
We're... Pardon me?
Or raise taxes.
Or, yeah, or raise taxes. Yeah, we definitely don't want to do that. The Fire Department Property Tax Credit 1099 issue, as of now, 1099 is going to be issued, but conversations are still ongoing. So I guess, as they say, the fat lady hasn't sung yet. I won't belabor the safari at the quarry. I will say that since the safari at the quarry has been announced, the calls for service for the Sheriff's Department have increased. Why is that? Well, before this event was announced, let's say several hundred people knew about that property, and they could go up there and do whatever. Now, literally tens of thousands of people know about it through social media, the media, and so on. And now it's obviously presenting a quality-of-life issue for the residents of Shadow Hills, and that's unfortunate. And I know, I'm not going to speak for everybody. I don't think the concern is for the event itself. I think the big concern is what happens after the event is over, and you have dirt bikes going through there at 2:00 in the morning. There's, back to the quality-of-life thing. I'd like to see the funding put back in the budget to turn that property into a park, which is what it was originally intended back in 2018 and '19. Recently, the executive held the State of the County last Thursday. Big shout out to all of our department heads. They're, they're all understaffed. They're, they're doing excellent work with, with the people that they got. We definitely need to hire more people. I found it interesting that there was no report from the sheriff's office, the state's attorney, or the Health Department, but shout out to those departments. They're, again, they're doing a great job. And I won't talk long about the litter pickup. James and I, we worked together on Sunday, had, had a good time. For me, Fireball was the winner on, on Sunday. You know, it changes every week. We have, you know, a winner for the day. But shout out to everybody, the Public Works who picks up the trash and weighs everything, and they're keeping statistics on what we're doing. City Salisbury Public Works, Greater Salisbury Committee, the Chamber for providing the funding for the signs. It's a public-private partnership that's working, and it's making a difference. And I will close by recognizing Mrs. Lynn Ingold, who ran and completed the Boston Marathon yesterday.
Thank you.
She's the one that sits here.
Yes, one that's not here.
The one that's not here.
She's recovering.
She's recovering.
Any other council comments? Seeing under presidential comments, it's been, it's come up more recently here in regard to the safari quarry, that there is possibly a zoning concern there. I think the public understands that the property is a county-owned property, but it is in the city limits. And because of that, it's subject to city zoning requirements. I think the city council did review this last, last night, and they did express concerns in regard to that. The fact that, you know, I think the event coordinator, the executive possibly were negligent in obtaining the proper permits that were necessary to put on this event. I'm not so sure that there was any type of guidance sought through the Planning Commission whatsoever before this event was put on. So it's a bit of an issue when, when you're trying to establish zoning ordinances, one party as opposed to another, I don't think you'd have any type of personal preference over whether or not they can execute any type of an event or change their property in any way without going through the same process that every other citizen in Wycomico County would have to go through. So I would encourage the City of Salisbury and the Planning Commission in particular, I believe they meet, was it Thursday at 1:30?
Thursday at 1:30.
Thursday at 1:30. So I would, I would encourage them to do their due diligence.
I don't know that it's on the agenda yet, John.
It may not be. It's, and I can't say. The meeting's there. It's a good point, Joe. They could add it to the agenda. I'm not sure. I haven't spoken with them personally. But either way, if this, if this does, I know that the city council itself is still has this under consideration. So I would just ask that they do this, their due diligence. And if it does go to the Planning Commission, which it probably should, that they, they do the same and treat it no different and with no special preference other than they would for any citizen in Wycomico County. So we appreciate that. That being said, entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into an open work session, followed by closed work session pursuant to General Provisions Articles, Section 3-305, B3 and 8, as follows, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related thereto concerning the library, to protect the county's bargaining power, and to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation to protect the county's legal position. Second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Means the chairman. We're going to take a half-hour recess, if you don't mind. For convenience, Wycomico County Council for Legislative Session 2024-08, April 16, 2024, 24. First item on the agenda for the open work session, the only item on the open work session agenda, is Riverside Homes and Mitchell Landing Apartments. Consideration of payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot program. We have Mr. Thomas Aid here with us. Mr. Aid, Mr. Bibb, I see you're out there.
I'm in the D.
All right.
Good afternoon.
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 We'll let you, we'll give you the floor here. Let you, let us know what you're looking for.
All right. So Tom Aid with Green Street Housing, Don Bibb with Wycomico Housing Authority. So we were coming before you guys with the request for a payment in lieu of taxes to essentially memorialize the intent of the tax exemption for Riverside and Mitchell Landing. To take one step back and make sure that you guys are fully aware of what's going on with, with the two projects. Riverside Homes is 75 affordable rental housing units located off of Riverside Drive. It's public housing, is owned by the Wycomico Housing Authority. And so the Wycomico Housing Authority has engaged Green Street Housing to be the developer partner for the redevelopment of that property. In this particular case, the redevelopment is in acquisition, we call it an acquisition rehab versus a tear-down and new construction. So we will be expending on Riverside Homes, you know, in excess of $100,000 per unit in hard construction costs to totally revamp all of the systems, all of the finishes, everything that's experiencing any level of obsolescence within the, within the confines of the structural property, roofs, windows, HVAC, you name it. It's on the list to be rejuvenated.
How many units, by the way?
75. And so it's, it's low-rise. It's one-story brick buildings. There's some mix of two, two-story buildings in there as well. It's a mix of one-bedroom and efficiency-style apartment units. The property was built in the 60s, so, and it's never gone through any substantial rehabilitation since. So, and I'll just share this as a piece, we're actually piloting a program with Maryland CDA for a decarbonization. The property has central gas boilers, and we'll be going through a program to discontinue the use of gas at the site in lieu of Douglas Mini Split electric systems, both heating and air. Mitchell Landing, through a RFP put out in 2001, River Mitch LLC, which is the partnership entity between Greenside, Green Street Housing and the Wycomico Housing Authority, have entered into a land disposition for the purchase of the 24-unit apartment building, or community, from the City of Salisbury. We will, in one, in one financial transaction, we will acquire, acquire the properties by the housing authority, and we will utilize the tax credit program, the tax-exempt bond program, to rehab all of the units. So there'll be one technical owner that, that controls operations and financing of the project, of which joint control between Green Street Housing and the Wycomico Housing Authority. Much like I mentioned with Riverside Homes, Mitchell Landing is going to undergo a substantial rehab. You guys may have heard about its condition. It's got a large amount of vacancy today. It's got some deferred maintenance. There's some condemnation that's already occurred. We'll be expending roughly $115,000 to $120,000 per unit in a total overhaul of the buildings and units, all systems, all, all mechanical finishes, just as we mentioned with Riverside Homes. All of this work being done under the oversight of Maryland Housing and Community Development, hitting their rehab standards, and we'll have long-term administrative obligations under their programs.
So who actually ends up owning these when the rehab is done?
So the loaded question, and complex, but I'm...
It shouldn't be. It should be simple. It's a deed.
It's, it's not that simple. But I will explain. So the, the structure for housing authority, public-private partnerships revolves around a lease program. So the housing authority will own both properties. The housing authority will enter into a 98-year capital lease with a special-purpose entity that's been created to facilitate the tax credit financing, of which the housing authority is one of the managing members within that, within that organizational structure. So owned by the housing authority will always be owned by the housing authority. In the case of Mitchell Landing, it will be conveyed from the city to the housing authority. And the housing authority enters into the lease for the, that's just a function of the financing.
Who derives the profit?
So CDA controls all of the profit. So if we were going to say the cash flow, that which would be available after the mortgages, 25% of the cash flow is shared between the housing authority and Green Street Housing.
The other 75?
The state of Maryland receives as mortgage payments.
So there's no, no profit to anybody in any of this?
I didn't say that. I said there's cash flow, but there's not significant cash flow. The properties are underwritten to support themselves. And so that's, that's the way it works. But it's not a massive amount of cash flow to anybody.
Are these Section 8 housing?
So the public housing units is utilizing a program called RAD, the Rental Assistance Demonstration. So it's a HUD program that's made to privatize and, and convert formerly public housing, or public housing to what becomes a project-based Section 8 program. So keep in mind... So keep in mind that at, at, at a public housing property, every tenant pays only a percentage of their income towards rent, which is the same function as what Section 8 does for a private landlord.
You said Mitchell Landing has 24 buildings?
Um, I, I may have, and if I did, I misspoke. It's 24 apartment.
Apartments, okay.
And, and the mix of units at, at Mitchell Landing is two and three-bedroom apartments. And that project was built in 1991, 93-ish, and it, it was financed using a program called the Partnership Rental Housing Program, directly financed to the city as the owner and borrower.
Thank you.
You have stated, and I know that you've had discussions with the city of Salisbury as well, and from what I understand, it appears as if you've stated to the city of Salisbury that, you know, the Wycomico Housing Authority is totally exempt. There's, there's, you know, that's it. There's nothing else to it. This has to be done. We want to get it on the table and get this signed, and we're over with it. That's fine. I understand that there has to be, though, an agreement between the government body, the county in particular here, as well as whatever other entity it, it might be. I'm assuming Wycomico Housing Authority. I don't know if it's Green Street. I don't know who the heck it really might be. But an agreement has to be made with the county.
It is customary to have an agreement between the two parties.
Right.
We have received a letter from the top, the Office of the Attorney General representing State Departments of Assessment and Taxation, providing a concurrence that the projects will each be exempt from taxation. And we can provide that and intend to provide that to you guys as a matter of due diligence.
Exempt from what taxation? Property taxes?
Yes. So keep in mind that these, these properties are already exempt from taxation. The city being the owner of Mitchell Landing is exempt from the, from taxation, and so therefore, no tax gets derived from that property. And the housing authority operates under a certain section of the code whereby there's an exemption in place for public housing authorities fulfilling the, you know, certain, I could, exact words, but their mission.
So you're saying, excuse me, you're saying that the, that the state or the attorney general is telling the county that they can't charge property taxes to an entity that's not owned by the county or by the city?
But this is what, this is what's been in place since 1967, when Mitchell Landing was built. So you've never derived direct taxation from Mitchell, I'm sorry, from Riverside Homes.
That may have been the pilot program put into place at that point in time, but there are other pilot programs that the county has where we do receive funding.
That's correct.
Yeah, so it is, it does exist.
Yes.
I mean, if you were to tell us that black and white, that this, you know, this mandate or the state, the statute you're referencing says that the exemption is a 100% exemption, then, you know, with all due respect, why would you be here today?
I'm here because-
It's stated by law that you don't have to be here today.
You're right.
Mm-hmm.
So, the project is going through public financing. So Maryland, you know, raises bonds in the secondary market, and they like everything to be as buttoned up as possible, if you will. And it's customary for them to see a pilot agreement between the two parties, despite the fact that there's an exemption in place.
Paul, is that correct?
Shani, hang on a second. Shani?
Yeah. I wanted to say, I'm familiar with both housing, and I believe in affordable housing. I want to get that clear. That's what was confusing to me. If you're already tax-exempt, like Riverside Homes, tax-exempt, why would you need us as far as the pilot program if you're already tax-exempt? That's the question. It was, when I read this material. And then it was confusing who, for me, who would be actually owning the property. And if Wycomico Housing Authority is going to be the final owner, and they're already tax-exempt, why would we need the pilot program? And I could see us as a council writing a letter of support for the project, because all of us here, I think, believe in affordable housing. And I know it's based, I know Mitchell Landing was based on the people's income. I don't think most of those houses were, most apartments were Section 8, because I knew some people that lived there. It was just based on their income. Now Riverside Homes is different, because it's mostly senior housing. Am I correct now? What is it now?
It's a combination.
Combination? Okay, because it used to be for seniors only, one time, one time. But, and then that would be based on their income. So I don't know actually who, my confusion is who is going to be the owner, who would be benefiting the pilot program. And we just had, we just had the delegation here, I don't know if you were here, listening to the problems financially that the state has with, with funding, you know? And then if we do, if we don't receive taxes, somebody's going to be cut short in, in what we have to do, not just with this, this project, but for the rest of the community. So if, if the community hears that we're giving this project payment in lieu of taxes, how long does that go? Does it go forever, or, or what?
So, we've proposed 40 years to align with the financing.
How mu, how many years?
Forty years.
I'll be dead then. But I'm just saying, people, we're going to get a public outcry why we're doing this, especially if they hear the housing authority is, you know, involved, when people already know that the housing authority is tax-exempt.
So there's a, so the structure, as I mentioned, there's an ownership and a lease, and there's a tax credit owner, you know, the, so, let me, let me just walk through it again. You've got the housing authority. They already applied for, or have the exemption in place. The question becomes, you're under lease to a private party. So the private party is, is an entity, a limited liability company, which has been, which has been created to syndicate low-income housing tax credits, and to be the special-purpose borrower on the tax-exempt bonds. And so the tax credits in this particular case bring about $11 million worth of, of the renovation cost and the transactional cost to the overall deal. And so because of the, of the lease structure, despite the fact that the OAG has already given us a letter, it's customary for the borrowers to have received a pilot, because they're not the housing authority. So that's why we're asking. But at the end of the day, the way that the structure works is that the, this private party is a conduit, a temporary means by which property ownership or capital lease and financing are overlaid to create a mechanism for the tax credits.
But the private party is the one getting the tax break?
The, so the private party, so in this case, Discover Bank is the, is the investor. So they have a duty to invest in low-income communities and make CRA, Capital, Community Reinvestment Act, investments into the communities in, in the vicinity which they have deposits. And so, Discover Bank buys the strip of tax credits for a market price. And so, yes, the tax benefits go to a private party, but let's also be clear that if we're receiving $11 million worth of cash fro, from, of capital to put into the renovation and financing of the project, Discover Bank will be getting, you know, just a little bit more than that, you know, maybe $11.5 million worth of tax credits. So they're buying a strip of benefits, yes, but they're paying dearly for it.
And it's, how long's the lease?
So, the lease is 99 years. And so this is where I was going to get to my next piece of, when I called it a temporary, no one, I wouldn't sit here and tell you that 98 years, this would be temporary. In year 15, once the, so that there's a compliance period that goes along with the tax credit program. So we're, we have obligations to Treasury and the IRS to operate in compliance with certain standards for the first 15 years. And provided we do so, all of the tax credit benefits flow to the investor, to the partnership which flows it to the investor. After the end of the 15-year period, Discover Bank, or in the case of any project, the investor exits. And so, the means of exit in this case is a right of first refusal, where the housing authority has the opportunity to step into the financial transaction and remove the private party. So I expect that in year 15, after I've managed to, the, the financial piece of the project, and Discover has received their benefits, in year 15, the housing authority will execute their right of first refusal to buy the property for $1 above the debt. So there, at that point, there are no longer private parties involved.
For the public, what exact, what type of relief are you anticipating? If there were a 100% exemption, what type of relief are you suggesting this would be, and, and amount of dollars per year?
I, honestly, I'm not prepared to, to say. We haven't paid, we, all I know is that we've received confirmation from the finance office that we have, that Riverside or Mitchell Landing have not paid property taxes in years. And so we propose not to change that.
But you're, you're asking us to put money into something without giving us how much money we're going to get in return on that investment over how many years?
I guess we could look at it as a, if then. If we don't move forward with a transaction, then everything stays the same. The city continues to own the property and not pay taxes, and the housing authority continues to own the property and not pay taxes. So all we're doing is using this as a means to help facilitate the, the financial feasibility of the transaction.
Well, why wouldn't the city and the county, maybe I'm missing something. Why wouldn't the city or the county fix it up, for lack of other words, keep the property, keep renting it out, keep getting?
They don't get money for it.
They don't get?
They don't get no profit.
Not even from the federal government?
They never made money on that property. I just wanted to say, I've been involved with Riverside, Westbrook Commons, home by Johnson's Lake, Johnson's Pond, and all these were affordable housing, and they did payment in lieu of taxes, I believe. And Home of Americas just did Gateway Village, that's in the city. And I think, like you said, you said 15 years. But we here need to know how much money would we be losing, because you're not, we're not, we're not going to get anything. We're not going to benefit from it. The people will benefit from it for, that's why I'm torn between, because in my district, I'm torn between the, the pilot program. It just concerns me that we won't get any money. I thought originally that you would get at least some money, not maybe half of it, or whatever the taxes would be. But since you, we don't know what your taxes would be, because the housing authority's never paid any money, city's never paid any money, so we don't actually know right now what figures we would be losing, because we don't have, they never pay taxes.
That'd be assessed.
So you have to have an idea of how much, what's the total investment going to be for the unit, for the property?
I mean, if we were, so it, it's not based on investment, it would base, be based on net operating income. Let's just say that on that, it's $100,000 a year.
How much would it be? I mean, you have to have a business plan.
The assessment?
Is that total product, project going to be?
The project-
I'm not worried about the assessment, really. Yeah, what's the total project going to cost? What's the value of the project?
About 24, 25 million dollars.
Okay, so 24, 25 million. So if the assessments, we know it's going to be less than 20 million, right?
The assessment will be probably less than 5 million. And for low-income housing tax, for any affordable housing in the state of Maryland, you're based off, you're assessed based off of your net operating income. You're not based, you're not based off of what the project down the street, that's conventional luxury housing might look like, so.
Comp's coming to play too. It's just not your ROI. Comp's coming to play.
It is. It is actually just your net operating income. The assessment office is mandated to follow a policy that relates only to the net operating income. They might use a comp to establish a cap rate.
So they don't, they don't treat it like a commercial, a standard commercial operation?
They don't, no. No tax credit or affordable housing is assessed like a conventional tan, standard commercial.
You just guessed that it'd be about 5 million maybe?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it's about, I mean, it's about $50,000 for the county in relief. On a basis.
Can I, can I ask a question? Mr. Aid, you sent a letter in January of 2023 regarding this to the county executive?
Yes.
And that's part of the package. In the letter, it says that Mitchell Landing is owned by the city, and that Riverside Homes is owned by the county housing authority. And it cites Section 7215 and Section 12104 with regard to the exemption and so on. But in the pilot agreement, it doesn't recite those sections. It cites a completely different section. It now recites Section 7506.1 of the tax property article.
So that's the, that's the authority to provide-
Right. So the initial letter's not correct, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't pay any attention to it, because it's not the section you're asking for the pilot program under.
We could have made a mistake.
Right. So, who is, River Mitch LLC is the company, quote unquote. Who, who are the members of River Mitch LLC?
So River Mitch LLC, at the time that we close our financing transaction, will be owned 99.99% by a, an investment vehicle owned by Discover Bank. And it'll be owned .01% by a special-purpose entity called River Mitch MM LLC, which will be owned 51% by Green Street Housing, which is David Layfield and myself, and 49% by the housing authority.
And are those operating agreements in existence?
Uh, they are not in, in existence yet. We would put them into place and, and make them valid and existing as of the day of closing.
Does River Mitch LLC currently exist?
Yes.
But it doesn't have an operating agreement?
It has, it has a single member. So River Mitch MM LLC currently has a single-member LL, a single-member owner, which is myself and Dave as, as GSH partners. And so we would admit the housing authority at the time that we close on the financing transaction. So what the, what the object, what the objective there is, is that the housing authority doesn't need to be the party of agreements prior to anything definitive. So we're in the pre-development stage. They have no business being in the pre-development stage. That's our job.
So can you provide a copy of the LLC agreement, operating agreement?
Yes.
In the first whereas clause in the payment-in-lie agreement, it says the company, River Mitch LLC, will acquire, construct, and operate. That implies to me that River Mitch LLC is going to own Riverside Homes and Mitchell Landing.
That, so it will acquire it through a capital lease.
So is the capital lease in existence?
We have not drafted the capital lease yet. I mean, we're not in the closing.
Why are we here if we don't have any documents?
I've never had a problem asking for it at this phase in the game. When I get to the-
How's the county council supposed to know what's supposed to happen if there's no written documents that show what's supposed to happen?
I mean, I have been trying to talk about it for, for four months.
I'm not arguing. I'm just asking. I don't underst, I, I've read the payment-in-lie agreement, and the payment-in-lie agreement says that River Mitch is going to own this. And you're telling, but my understanding-
So we aren't talking about land, if it's talking about ownership. We can own buildings. The housing authority can own the land.
So-
So technical tax ownership conveys with a capital lease. So I think we're, I don't want to get mixed up in words. The intention is what I spelled out. I'd be happy to spend any amount of time talking through all of the logistics.
Seven, the, the payment-in-lie agreement refers to Section 7506.1 of the tax property article. And under that section, real property may be exempt from county tax, property taxes, if the real property is owned by a person engaged in constructing or operating housing structures, the real property is used for a housing structure, project that is constructed. The point being that it may be exempt, but it's not automatically exempt. But you indicate you have a letter from the OAG saying it's exempt. Can, have you, can you provide a copy of the letter?
Happy to, yeah.
Does it say you're exempt? Or does it say, you, if you meet these, this criteria, you'll be exempt?
I'll, I'll share you all of the correspondence, but from the Assistant Attorney General, we received, "Dear Mr. Bibb, this is to confirm that the above properties are exempt from property taxes under, under Housing and Community Development, Article Section 1204, notwithstanding the lease to a low-income housing tax credit partnership."
Okay, but 12104 relates to the, the Wycomico Housing Authority?
That's because the land is owned by the housing authority.
But the Wycomico Housing Authority is not signing the pilot agreement.
It could be, it could be a counterparty to it, if you'd like.
Well, they're not a party to it. Well, they're not a party to it. I know there's a paragraph in here that says that the housing authority agrees to do certain things, but they're not signing this agreement. At least I don't see a signature line for it.
So like, like any first draft of an agreement, I would think that this is the starting point for a dialogue with you and, and to have my counsel involved and make sure that we find an agreement form that satisfies both parties as to its validity and intent.
Okay. So the, I would just point out under, I guess I'm confused now as to whether this is supposed to be under 12104 or whether it's supposed to be under 7506.1, which is what's cited in here. Under 7.506.1, while you may be exempt, the owner of the real property has to enter into an agreement with the governing body, which is the pilot agreement, to allow the entire entity or the portion of the property which is maintained for lower incomes to remain as housing for lower, lower income structures for at least five years. So i, is there an agreement to do that?
Yes. So among the closing documents that would get produced by Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development's OAG, leading up to closing, would include a low-income use covenant that would run with the land, be recorded on records, and provide for a 40-year use restriction on the property.
Under, just so we're clear, so the county council's clear, under 7506.1, if that's what we're going under, the owner and the governing body of the county have to enter into an agreement that the owner shall pay a negotiated amount in lieu of the Apple County or municipal corporation property tax. So while you may be exempt, you have to enter into a pilot agreement that allows the county to collect funds if they choose to. Are we in agreement about that?
I, I have not been given that indication from my counsel, but be happy to keep talking about it.
It can't be more than what they would collect on taxes.
Can't be more than what, the section 12104, which would apply to the, the, the housing authority, says specifically that shall pay the political subdivision in which a housing project is wholly or partly located an amount that may be set by mutual agreement and that does not exceed the amount of regular taxes levied on similar property. So the question, I mean, I, I don't know what that dollar amount is, but there is, I mean, you could agree to zero, but you're not required to agree to zero. But I, I guess my problem is, I'm sitting here reading this proposed pilot agreement, and I don't, I don't understand why the, if the housing authority has an ownership interest, I don't know why they're not signing it. And I think the housing authority has to be a party to the pilot agreement if they have an ownership interest. And I, there, I'm not aware that the county council has been provided any documentation to back up, and I mean no disrespect to you, Mr. Aide, but I don't, I don't have, and I assume the county council hasn't been provided, with any backup documents beyond this pilot agreement. So we don't know what the arrangement is between River Mitch LLC and the, and the housing authority or anybody else. I, I don't, if this is just a, a meet and greet situation where you wanted to put it in front of the council and have them give a, to have them know you're going to come back, but if you're asking for it to be passed today, I don't know how the council could do anything because I don't think there's sufficient information for the council to be able to make any decisions.
I think that's reasonable. In fact, I think I, I mean, we sent that letter, what did we date that letter in?
A year and a half ago.
Okay. We've been working a long time to get somebody's attention. And so going through the county administration, we were unsuccessful for a very long time, despite regular follow-through. And so we had no, no other thing to do than beg and plead and start reaching out to the council members to get somebody's attention. So if this is nothing more than the starting point, I couldn't expect you to agree to sign a document that your council hasn't had the opportunity to negotiate with the counterparty. So please don't expect that this is?
It'll be Mr. Wolver doing the negotiating, I think, but.
Okay.
Well, I think, just as I said, obviously, this is a, this is a first step. This is the first time it's come for an open work session. Traditionally, that's what we do in an open work session, just start beating the bush, understand what needs to happen, who's handling, what, what are we missing? I, I know that this is, and by the way, I feel sympathetic in the sense that I know that, you know, I heard you, I heard you talk about this issue, I don't know how long ago that was, last year, and apparently you haven't, it's been 15 months for you to even get to this point.
We didn't send that letter, just as a, we didn't send that letter without having first sat, sat down with the executive and staff.
Well, and I, and I do appreciate, by the way, and, and of course, I understand, so assuming for-profit business, you're trying to make money, but you're doing so trying to make these units at $100,000 per unit, 75 units there, 115, 120,000 per unit for another 24 units that you are then, of course, trying to make them clean and green and, and move them in a different direction, which, that of course should be applauded. I guess the, you know, the council, traditionally, we just like to, you know, I think none of us, well, except for our council president, you know, not many of us are involved in this kind of details to any great deal. And you're talking about financial partnerships and other kind of pieces, it's a little challenging to try to stay all up to, to, to date and understand what's happening. But I guess what would be easiest, I'm just for me saying as one council member, you know, sometimes it's nice to be able to say, okay, here's, this is the situation, I want to advance this in the next three months. This is what in a similar situation, other counties are doing, you know, we need to figure out an agreement, but of course, put that all in the hands of the attorneys or other folks and, and obviously with our county housing authority to try to, to make sure that we have something that makes sense. Not my forte, but I lean on the council president, I know he's, he's got a lot of experience there and others, but I think what I'd like to personally see was just something, okay, hey, here's what, here's what we're, we're trying to do, we're trying to move it along, this is what other areas do, and then let's, let's start filling in those details as far as what that, you know, what the exact pieces would look like. I know these are probably meant to be more draft documents, but we would like to be very clear on those, just like we are with any other contracts or any other thing that we're reviewing. Here's exactly what's happening, and I do appreciate your transparency and help make that happen.
And also, I just want to say that I want to make sure the housing authority remains owner of Riverside Homes. I don't want to see, what is it, Rivers, whatever the name of that organization, I know Green Street and then there's another one, right? That you own, you said you own, what was the name of it?
River Mitch.
River Mitch.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that's the name because Riverside and Mitchell Landing, well, we don't want you to be owners of, I don't want you to be owners of Riverside Homes. I want it to continue to be the owner of the Wacomiko Housing Authority.
So just to, to be clear, and maybe Don support me, our agreement with the housing authority is, is to provide the opportunity for the ease of exiting the private parties after the end of the tax credit compliance period. And again, that's through the mechanism of a right of first refusal.
Is there a written agreement between?
Yes.
Maybe we could get a copy of that.
I, I mean, I guess my, my, from a, yes, of course, I'd be happy to share it. Maybe there's a better means than just, who, who gets it when? How do we, how do we kind of have a work group to, to solve, to ask the questions and, and work this through? Like, how, how do we, besides being on a, on a microphone, how do we get there?
Bring it with you and give it to us.
Well, you can, you can also, you can give it to Mrs. Hurley, you can leave it at the county council office. I mean, we have to operate, and as you know, we have to operate in oceans, open session.
Yes.
In addition to what you, what Mr. Benson has requested, I, I'd like to see if it's possible, and just how you have, your determination of your ROI, seems awful low, but I, I'd just like to see that. I'm not quite sure how the dynamics work as far, as far as your corporation's concerned, so.
Yeah, so the, the, I guess I give a, a little bit more information about the tax credit housing development business. And so the tax credit development business is for the, for the private developers involved and, and for the housing authority is that we, we earn a developer fee. And so the developer fee is established by, by the state, it follows their programmatic rules, and the developer fee in this case is split 75% to the, to Green Street and 25% to the housing authority.
But if you could supply that to Mrs. Hurley or Mr. Benson or both, actually, that would be, that might be helpful for us. Hypothetically, our rate's around just less than a dollar.
Sounds crooked.
So if we were to say, all right, we've had a great meeting, we're going to, we'll, we'll reduce that, we'll make it 80 cents. Where are we?
We're infeasible, and we don't have a, if we're, if we can only get a 20% reduction in tax from the county, then the project is infeasible because we've underwritten the project to operate with the same set of economic circumstances it's operated under for the last 40 years, which includes no taxation.
It would be infeasible for $10,000 difference in annual property taxes?
From?
You're on thin a line?
It, these things are on a hairline. They're not underwritten for, they're, they're not, they're not luxury properties with investors that make, that have made investments to receive cash flow.
Well, if you, if you would supply that to, to our officers so that we could have that information, that'd be helpful.
Okay.
Joe?
And can I just say one thing? I, I might have missed, I might have misunderstood what you just said, but if I'm looking at a property taxation of, of $100,000 and you were willing to drop from 100 to 80, then I'm going from $0 of taxation to 80,000 of taxation. So I might, maybe we're, maybe we're not totally connecting on what you implied there.
Good. Joe? You know, when we talk about giving, I guess you'll call it a tax break or tax payment in lieu of taxes and reducing the tax rate or the taxes, it creates two issues. For one thing, you're going to be, folks in these houses, they're going to have kids that's going to go to school, you're going to increase the population possibly in the county, they're going to need police services, fire services, all the services that come with citizens that live in. So we have to, you, you can't do it for free. And the reason those houses are probably in the condition they're in now is because they didn't give, they didn't do it for free. They did do it for free. So the city didn't repair them because there was no, no initiative to take care of them. There was no initiative, you know, they, so now they're falling apart. You know, and I, I look at it like this, you've got thousands of citizens in Wacomiko County that are paying their fair share in taxes, whether they're renting or they're, they own property. If they're renting, they're paying rent, and their landlord's paying the rent and paying the taxes. So, you know, it's on an issue of fairness to the other citizens of Wacomiko County, I don't see why we should be reducing, reducing the cost so somebody else, the developer probably not even from around here, can make a profit, so.
I'm from around here, just, by the way, I live, I live right here, and I work right here, and I employ a lot of people right here, so, but, understood.
I, I agree with Joe fully. I just, I don't like the sound of it, and I just don't think we should be giving property tax breaks like this, and we can't do it for everybody.
Well, we appreciate that. We'll wait to hear from you in far, as in reference to what Mr. Benson has requested and what the council needs, and then we'll, we'll reschedule this again, okay?
Yeah, so could I ask, who's my point of follow-up?
You could follow up with Mrs. Hurley if you'd like.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Great.
Yeah, that'd be best, all right?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
He wasn't prepared.
Something's up with that.
All right. I'll see.
I do.
Our motion adjourned to go into closed session.
So.
Second?
Second.